Supervisor, we are live.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September 14th regular work session of the East Hampton Town Board. Carol, would you please read the roll call?
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilwoman Leece.
Present.
Councilwoman Overby.
You're muted, Sylvia.
I'm sorry, here.
Councilman Bragman.
Here.
Supervisor Vance Goyack.
Present. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's work session will begin with the public portion where any member of the public may have their comments heard by the town board. There's a call-in number that's on the screen. We ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. We'll then be following with topics: New York Stretch Code, New York Stretch Energy Code with Lauren Steinberg from our Natural Resources Department; proposed amendments to Chapter 25 Code of Ethics; and Ethics Board Correspondence, Hugh King; Montauk Skate Park renovation design, David Leece; and Southern Pine Beetle update from our Land Management Department. Following that, we'll have liaison reports, and we do have a few resolutions. So Jason, at this point, we can go right to the phones. Do we have any callers on the line?
Yes, we do. I am unmuting now. One second. Hold, just hold up. Let me just get this person up. Hello, caller. Hello, caller, ending in 8367. You're on the air. Hello?
Hi. Good morning.
Morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you could please state your name for the record.
Okay. This is Mary Giaquinto, and I live on Stephen Hans Path.
Good morning, Mary.
So I, how are you? How's everybody this morning? It's a beautiful day.
It sure is. Thank you.
Yeah. So, a couple of things. I filed a complaint about debris dumped on the right-of-way on Buckskill, and the ordinance officer returned my call. He told, two weeks had passed, and he said that he was trying to reach the party responsible without success. So he was trying other means to reach the party. I think that the ordinance officers should not have to expend so much effort. They should have more tools in their toolbox to try to get a satisfactory resolution. And I think that the fines, whatever they are, if they are, should be heavier, and that money should go towards maintaining the sides of the roads. As you know, they get a lot of traffic, and they need work. So I was objecting to the ordinance officers, sort of, the scofflaws or the people that do this kind of thing. I kind of don't want to use taxpayer money to support the transfer of FSA they impose on the town. Am I making myself clear?
Yeah, I think I understand that loud and clear. I wonder, has that issue been resolved? That specific issue been resolved yet for you?
It hasn't, because they can't reach the party. And they said that he volunteered, the ordinance officer, that this person was a repeat offender, and that they had other issues, and that's why he was dodging their phone call. So, but that's, I think they need more.
Yeah, if you would like to, if you can send me an email or call the office, my office, 631-324-4140, happy to follow up on that.
Okay. I appreciate that. But we also, we also recognize, I think, that we all need to, oh, a greater effort on the sides of the roads, maintaining them. And I think that it could use more money, and I want to use people, other people's money, to further that.
I understand.
Yeah. So, the second issue I have is, just raising quickly, is the airport. When we bought the property in 1986, we signed an aircraft noise easement. And I was well aware, and have been well aware, in all the decades we've been here, about the noise of the aircraft. And I do not object to it. I bought the property, fully well aware of it, the location of the airport, and, yes, it can be inconvenient. And I think the benefit to the community is enormous. And I'm specifically referring to the medical, the medevac, and that kind of thing. I think it's saved lives, and saving life is really critical. So I wanted to get that down on paper. And finally, the Peconic Bay Tax, or the proposed Peconic Bay Tax. Again, I believe this is a transfer of effort to the taxpayers. When that is unfair, I think only zoning can solve, and was intended to solve, fair housing, was intended to make sure everybody got an option of a place to live. It's not the taxpayers' role, and I think that confuses people when they think that if only they paid more, other people would find a better place to live. And I am going to close and say, at one point, anybody that owns property out here is a millionaire. If you own more than one, you're a multimillionaire. It's, it's, how should I say it? It's a complex issue. Many people have relied on their housing to see them through their old age. But there's something a little off about that. And it requires more scrutiny, better understanding of the, all the stakeholders and their roles in where we are today.
So, Mary, when you referred to the Peconic Bay Tax, I think what you're talking about, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the Community Housing Fund that would be levied upon transfer of a property, so that the purchaser of a property would pay a half percent tax towards the Community Housing Fund, much in the same way that our Community Preservation Fund raises money for open space, historic preservation. And that legislation is passed both houses and is awaiting the governor's signature. So, you know, it would only affect those who are purchasing properties within the five East End towns, and it would exclude those who were first-time property purchasers. So, first-time home buyers are exempt, and that the actual exemptions for Community Preservation Fund as well have been raised. So it's only, I believe, taxed above $400,000. So the first $400,000 of the purchase price is exempted. But we appreciate you taking the time to call us today and your comments.
So, here's the other thing. It will raise a very small amount of money, hardly enough. And that is confusing to people, and it's an unfair tax, because it just taxes a few people. It won't achieve the ends it was intended to achieve. That's not, that's, and I thought it was going to be put on a referendum. I thought that was what passed.
So, so in terms of how much money...
I mean, I'm confused.
So, in terms of how much money would be raised, there would be a referendum. But it requires the signature of the governor to be able to allow the towns to put it forward as a referendum. But I think it's important to note that if, if it had passed, what was originally proposed last year, if the governor had signed it last year, the five East End towns would have generated $30 million worth of revenue into that fund to help offset what has been, I think, an astronomical increase in housing prices. So, we, we think it would be a significant, substantial tool towards trying to maintain a balance in our community, which is so critical. You know, our fire departments, our volunteer fire departments, our EMS is volunteer EMS. These are people who are working people, and if we can't have teachers, police, and firefighters living in town, we're going to really start to see a degradation, I think, in the fabric of our community. So, I think that's, you know, really what we're seeking to rebalance and to preserve, you know, our history and our traditions, and make it affordable for young people who were born and raised in this community to actually be able to stay here.
Well, that, that's all, the thing is that that should have been, there was ample opportunity to address that in decades past, and there was absent political will. And even if it's $30 million, you say, in the five towns, which, let's say, I don't know, East Hampton gets 10, please, give me a plan, what you would do with the 10 million, what you would buy, and what would you put up. By the time they establish a department and rules and regulations, half of that money will be gone. I don't mean, it's just that I'm an old woman, and I've seen it. I've seen it presented, I've gotten excited about it, and it never delivers. There isn't the political will to make it happen. And I don't see it on the part of the people either. No one wants it next door to them, for fear that it will, it will impact their values, the value of their homes. And, yes, of course, we've lost tons of people, the majority of our local people. So, while I echo what you say, I'm extremely cynical and skeptical. And passing another tax is an easy answer, and it doesn't deliver. It has all kinds of unintended consequences. So, I'll just put that on the table. And I appreciate the opportunity to share those few thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. We appreciate you calling today. Enjoy your day.
Thank you. Bye.
Jason, can we...
Yep. Oh, good. Okay. Caller ending 5009, you're on the air. Hello, caller, ending 5009, you're on the air. Okay, going to move on to the next caller. Hello, caller, ending 2866, you're on the air. Hello?
Hi, good morning. This is Jacqueline Esposito. I live on Lincoln Avenue. I'm calling in opposition to a cell tower in the Crandall Norfolk Woodlands. First, wanted to share with the board, or remind you, that residents of the Norfolk-Crandall Woodlands neighborhood still have not, still have not received a response to our August 2nd letter that was sent by council to the board. We followed up on that letter this morning by submitting an environmental assessment form, or EAF, which more accurately reflects the severe impacts that a cell phone tower on our open space woodlands in our neighborhood would have on health, safety, and the environment. We also sent to this board yesterday about two dozen public comments and photographs documenting that the woodlands have been used as a park for four decades. We submitted these to the planning board in connection with the public comment period for their vote requiring the Springs Fire District to consider Camp Blue Bay and the Crandall Norfolk Woodlands as, quote, "reasonable alternatives", end quote, to the fire district's request for a tower. Those public comments and the photos, as I said, show that the woodlands have been used as a park for about four decades. This is consistent with the public comments from at least four of you on this board acknowledging that the woodlands have been used as a park, including by some of your own children. The correspondence also includes copies of East Hampton Town's open space map, the comprehensive plan map, the protected land map, and the old filed map, all of which clearly identify the Crandall Street location as either recreational open space or as recommended for a park as part of the urban renewal process. Of course, these all show that this is not a legal location of a communications tower, and is therefore not a viable or reasonable alternative. If you have not already done so, we ask that each of you review the EAF, the public comments submitted from residents who are directly impacted by your proposal, and review the maps, which I hope you are all familiar with, because they are town maps. We expect a response to these communications, as well as to the August 2nd letter. As I've said, we have not received any response from this board. Next, we do have a couple of questions. Several weeks have now passed since the town has allegedly restarted negotiations with the Girl Scouts and American Tower. Neighborhood residents would like an update on the status of those negotiations. We would like, you know, we have asked for a transparent process, and we would like a status report, Peter, if you are able to give one. And then lastly, we did want to follow up on Peter Vance Goyack's decision to hold town board meetings virtually. We're all very concerned about public health. It does seem like, from publicly available data, I believe Newsday has this data, that COVID cases are not rising in East Hampton. Schools have reopened, town hall is open. I was actually there last week, and one of the employees was unmasked. And most businesses are operating normally. So, I don't understand why these meetings are continuing to be held virtually, and we've not had any indication from the supervisor as to when these meetings would return to in-person. I know that there have been some questions around the motivation behind this decision, and whether the town is complying with open meeting rules. And so, Peter, we also have that question for you, if you have an update for us on, on when these meetings would resume in-person. And so I think those are just two questions, and a request to please respond to the August 2nd communication from council and the September 13th and 14th correspondence that was shared with the board. Thank you.
Thanks for calling, Jackie. With regard to in-person meetings, we will revert to them as soon as we see the numbers decline. I'll be giving an update on that in my liaison report later today. We have seen a dramatic increase in the number of cases. Those, you know, the numbers, for instance, for the period of the first two weeks in September were nearly equal to the entire month of cases that we had back in March of this year. And so, we're monitoring that, and as soon as we believe that the numbers are starting to decline, then we would revert to in-person meetings, as I stated before. And the board discussed this at work session prior to going to remote meetings, that public health and safety has to be number one, and that there certainly is ample opportunity to contact the board and participate in a town board work session through remotely, as you've well demonstrated for the last several weeks. And as far as discussions with the Girl Scout Camp and American Tower, those are ongoing. And I thank you for calling.
Moving on to the next caller. Okay. Hello, caller, ending 9322, you're on the air.
Hello, this is Elde Penzel. I'm calling first, I want to ask a question. The DEC has recently opened the antlerless deer hunting season from September 11th to 19th. I was wondering if the board had made any decision about that yet.
So, Ms. Penzel, the town board has adopted through its town code the New York State Hunting Regulations. So, whatever those regulations are, that's what can occur on town properties that are legal to hunt and on private properties within the township.
Okay. I believe this was a different, a different matter. It was sort of a rushed decision, because it was just announced by the DEC on September 1st, and it would allow the slaughter of antlerless deer, which by definition would include fawns, using the cruelly humane bow hunting. Of course, it's general knowledge that the DEC is an agency dominated by hunters, which promotes hunting and subsists on the fees paid for hunting licenses and the taxes on accompanying ammunition and related paraphernalia. And now, that's a blatant conflict of interest voiced on a public that surely is unaware of that. And we believe that this ill-considered decision would permit people to stalk, hunt down, and for the most part, mortally injure, if not summarily kill, beautiful wildlife, causing incalculable suffering to sentient beings who are the unfortunate innocent deer on town-owned land. I want to state my opposition to even more hunting and killing, and the possibility of unintended consequences, especially when there are so many people who have taken up residence here in East Hampton as a result of the pandemic. The town population these days is largely made up of people who love and enjoy the presence of wildlife, and who oppose these inexcusably heartless and unjustified kill ventures. Now, interest in hunting continues to plummet nationwide, and the general population is not in favor of senseless bloodshed for a sense of pride or ego. And it's time that, as an educator, I believe, that, that we lead by example and encouraged our children away from violent exploits like that, and to learn how to hunt and shoot wild animals with a camera. I urge the town board to reject the implementation of antlerless hunting season, and that's why I was inquiring about it. I don't know whether the decision has already been made in terms of this particular thing.
Well, I appreciate you calling and letting your comments be known.
Yes, I just wanted to interject that we don't uniformly adopt the DEC's hunting regulations, that there are areas in town lands where we don't follow their rules, and we exclude hunting. So, we're not completely powerless here. We've had this discussion before, a few years ago, when there was some opposition to hunting, and it's quite clear that, that that's the case in many locations.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm glad to hear that.
Caller down.
Moving on. Hello, caller, 8764.
Hello.
Hello.
Good morning. This is David Buddha. A couple of quick, a couple of quick comments. By the way, some of those prior callers are a tough act to follow. You have some intelligent, concerned citizens in this town, and that's great. I'd like to thank Mr. Scott Wilson for arranging to have the last, all of the available annual audit, financial reports for the CPF Fund posted in one place on the town website, under the Division of Finance, so that now people do have a place to go to, to see 10 years of financial results and financial reports. That's the good thing. The bad news, though, is, it's my belief and my experience with at least some of the other towns within the Peconic Bay Community Preservation Fund authorization, that they do arrange to have monthly financial reports delivered by the town or by the appropriate official to the CPF Advisory Board, and to incorporate those into their monthly public minute meetings, public meeting minutes. And that is something that we do not do. With the possibility of an upcoming referendum on whether or not the CPF tax should be further increased, it's important for the town citizens to be able to readily assess what is the current balance of available CPF funds, how much has been committed, how much is available, how much of borrowed funds there are, and to have a better handle on a month-to-month basis what the CPF finances look like. So, I'm going to ask the town to ask Mr. Wilson to provide monthly financial data, documents that would be public, incorporated into their minutes, and made available, perhaps through the town website. Next topic. I see on your agenda that you have a special warrant which relates in the amount of about $1.63 million, which I'm sure relates to the town's decision to purchase the land for the future site of Senior Citizens Center, which is a seven-acre portion of the 11.5 acres owned by an LLC controlled by Mr. Cabaz at 403 Abrams Path. My question is, it was my understanding that the property would necessarily have to have a subdivision in order to create that parcel before you purchase it. So, I'm wondering why you are able, at this point, to expend those funds by way of a special warrant. I'm wondering whether those funds are going to go into escrow until the property subdivision process is complete. I'm not aware, although I may have missed it, not aware that the planning board has started considering a subdivision application yet. So, I'm wondering if someone could explain and clarify, what is the nature of this special warrant for $1.63 million plus change that is on today's agenda? Third item, last for me today. Since you have a public hearing scheduled for September the 23rd to consider acquiring at the cost of $5.5 million the property at 44 Foxborough Road at Montauk, I'm wondering what documentation the town intends to provide to the public, either on the website or in response to my FOIL request, to explain and justify the future uses of the property. I have not seen, and I assume that there is, a designation report prepared by historical preservationists, although I have not seen such a document. And I assume that there are, if there is a contingent contract, excuse me, a conditional contract, as the law enables you to do so, I've made a request for a copy of that. I just think that when the town considers expending $5.5 million, that is certainly above a threshold that makes it significant, and that since this is perhaps for a future historical museum site, I think that there should be some information provided to the public well before the public hearing, so that it can be assessed appropriately, so that people can make intelligent, informed comments on September 23rd, when you have your public hearing. So, I'd appreciate your response to any of the matters that I've raised today. Thank you.
Sure. I'll defer to council on the Cabaz piece. John, if you, if you want to speak about that. But in terms of the Carl Fisher House, David, I'm not aware that the town board has ever put together a management plan prior to acquisition of a historic structure. You know, the, the idea of preserving a historic home or other building, you know, really is a standalone. How it is managed going forward is often, you know, taken up with the Town Property Management Committee in discussion, oftentimes with an outside 501(c)(3) that would manage and maintain the structure. That's been our, our policy and practice. Notable examples of that are the Farm Museum at Cedar Street in North Main, Duck Creek Farm, which is now, you know, run by ACDC Arts Center at Duck Creek, and those are successful. The Second House property, which is not a CPF property, but is, we have a license agreement with Montauk Historical. Montauk Historical, I believe, has interest in this as part of a number of properties that they either own or manage for that they either own or manage for the benefit of the public and the preservation of history in Montauk. So, you know, I'm sure there will be ample discussion and material available to justify an acquisition of this property. We'll be having that public hearing as well.
I just want to jump in with a comment because you're, I'm sorry, do you want to go on, David? I'll make my comment after.
Okay, sure. I do think, Peter, that every single historical landmark designation, whether it be a historic district creation, or a town historic landmark, or a town historic special landmark, has required a preparation of a designation report by a historical preservationist. All that I have seen so far produced by Mr. Wilson was five years ago that Montauk Historical Society put together a collection of newspaper articles touting the history of Carl Fisher and his accomplishments, and that is not exactly what a historical preservationist would prepare in terms of analyzing the property, the structures. There are two major structures, one big house and one that's, I think, mostly a garage. And also, at a minimum, before the CPF should be considering expending funds, there must have been a planning department evaluation or assessment that was prepared so that it could be submitted to the CPF Advisory Board and so that they could then do their scoring and review. I've seen no such documents, and of course, as you've said, Peter, some historical locations were not acquired with CPF funds. This is a proposed CPF $5.5 million expenditure, and I think that requires ample actual information to be provided to the public before you acquire it, and then instead of only afterwards, when you then have to figure out, well, now what are we going to do with this white elephant? Thank you.
I just wanted to interject a comment on that because I was going to say, and I am saying now, that I think David Buddha is raising a threshold issue, and it's probably a good idea to get an architectural historian to look over that building and give us a report on it. I'm happy to recommend one or two. I've worked with them. These are people who are highly qualified, that have PhDs usually in architecture and art history. Carl Fisher is, he's quite a colorful character and a real, I mean, a real salesman, and he had an up-and-down career, and he's really a colorful character. But I think it would help to get a professional assessment of the building. And I know that the, I don't think the exterior of the building is particularly notable, but I'm willing to be proven wrong on that, but the interiors are where it hasn't been renovated or changed are, you know, pretty exciting, actually. But I do think it would be a good idea, it's a large purchase, over $5 million, and I think it would be a good idea to get a real qualified architectural historian to give us a report, and I don't think we'd take that one.
David, I can actually email you a historical designation proposal that was received for the Carl Fisher House to the town board. Jeff, you received that also, and David, I'll email that over too. It's exactly the same as has been done for other, the other properties that have been designated as historical landmarks. I'll send that to you after our meeting today.
Thank you. I hope that's something more professional and more qualified than the document that was submitted five years ago to the CPF Fund, because that was essentially a collection.
It is what the justification for the town code is to use and designate historical structures, the same we did for Second House, also the same that we did for the Art Barge recently also, and I'll get that off to you, David, no problem.
Right, but it shouldn't just be sent to me. It should be on, it's a matter, as a matter of practical.
And David, we'll post it, too, if that's what you're requesting.
Yeah, David, your point's well taken, and I don't think anybody disagrees with you here on the board. I haven't heard anybody disagree with you.
All right, thank you.
Take care. Thanks for calling. Can we go to the next caller, Jason?
Okay, moving on to next caller. Okay, next caller, ending in 9015. You are on the air. Hello.
Good morning. My name is Michael Hanson, and I live in Wayne Scott. The summer is nearly over astronomically speaking. The autumnal equinox is next week. This means cooler weather, shorter days, less sunlight, and the end of gas-powered leaf blower restrictions. The gas-powered leaf blower restriction has been a great success this summer. It really has. Spending time outside in the garden has actually been quieter, more peaceful. I could even sit on my deck and not be accosted by 12 leaf blowers running at full speed on a Thursday afternoon. The ordinance enforcement department has done an admirable job of reminding landscape companies of the restriction, and I've even written a few citations I've heard. It is unfortunate, however, that some landscaping companies try to play games and use their electric leaf blowers by the street and their gas leaf blowers in the backyard. And some have fled ignorance of the restriction. Just the other morning, as I'm outside with my kids waiting for the school bus, exhaust from the leaf blowers next door wafts over us. I spoke with the operator, and he said he thought the restriction ended after Labor Day. And while I'm thoroughly pleased with the quieter summer, in my opinion, this restriction needs to be longer. So many times I've seen leaf blowers blowing leaves out from under trees and exposing the soil, not off a driveway, under trees. There's no reason for this. It is also just not good for the trees, the health of the trees, not at all. Leaves, leave the leaves where they lay. Anyway, thank you for your continued support on this topic.
Thank you for calling, Michael. Jason, can we go to the next caller, please?
Doing so. Hello, caller, ending 5138. Hello.
Hello, this is Bill Crane, President of the East Hampton Group for Wildlife. I'd like to echo a little bit of what Zelda Penzel said. The DEC announced a new antlerless hunting season for, they announced it on September 1st for September 11th through 19. In our area, it would be bow hunting, which is the cruelest form of hunting because the wound rate is so high. In other words, the deer are left wounded many times and just die slow, agonizing deaths, often with infections in the woods. The DEC's announcement failed to say whether the antlerless hunting would include fawns. It might. I think many residents will object to killing the fawns. They don't say why this is going, they say it's going to help the deer population, but hunting has not reduced it so far, so it's not clear why this would work. The central issue right now is, I think the hunting is probably going on because Andy Gates announced that it would go on. Nobody has had any time to discuss this issue. The DEC announced it September 1st, 10 days before the season would begin. Municipalities haven't had the time to discuss and decide whether they wish to participate. Our town does have the power to say no. We've done it before. We don't always go along with the DEC. We do have autonomy to make decisions. On weekend hunting during January, we didn't put it everywhere the DEC allowed, just because they allow it, we don't have to do it. And I think the town should object to the timing, which was just so rushed, it gives the public no opportunity. I mean, here I am speaking now while it's going on, and the town should halt it until it can have a meaningful discussion. This is not, it's just not fair to do things in such a rushed manner when lives of animals will be lost. Thank you for listening to this, and I hope you will take it up and send the DEC a note and also halt it for now. It shouldn't be going on until the board and the public have had a chance to discuss the issue and decide, do we want to participate?
Thank you for calling, Bill.
All right, moving on to next caller. Hello, caller, ending 4221. You are on the air.
Thank you. Good morning, Board. It's Jane Mearing in Amagansett. Before I start my specific remarks today, I did just want to thank you and especially all our essential town services members for everything everyone did to, like, hold it all together this summer where a lot of things seemed to be about to burst at the seams. So just that as an unrelated preamble. Today, I just wanted to take a couple minutes to put one thing on the Board's radar screen. It's not related to a formal agenda item. On one hand, what I'm going to raise here might be viewed as more of a hamlet-specific item, but I'm flagging it because I think it also gets to a bigger issue that is relevant town-wide, and that issue is about the matter of transparency, or in particular, a certain lack thereof that often occurs around development activity, both commercial and residential. So specifically, as some of you might know, Mrs. Cirillo, the longtime owner of the Amagansett IGA and the other buildings around that parking lot property, sold the supermarket earlier in the summer. The East Hampton Star reported on August 12th that a person by the name of Dominic Papa is the buyer. It's not clear what, if any, ties Mr. Papa has to our community or what interested him in this investment. The article mentions only that his other business interest is his ownership of a car dealership in Connecticut. Though it's not mentioned in the Star article, I do believe this purchase also includes the next-door structure that houses the seafood market that we lovingly refer to as Mike's and the small liquor store, both of which have been in the same local ownership for decades. And I've also heard, though I have not seen it confirmed, that the purchase includes the building housing our little Amagansett post office and the laundromat just to the west of that. So it wasn't a surprise to many of us in Amagansett to hear the IGA and some of the other buildings have sold. But what is something of a surprise, and it's kind of becoming a concern for a number of us, is that the deal seems to be shrouded in some degree of mystery. It's my and other neighbors' impressions, no one working or managing in the IGA knows what's going on or the intentions or the plans of the new owner, and that lack of transparency is also becoming an issue, I think, for the other business proprietors and tenants, at least as of last week. I don't think any of them have been contacted by the new owner. I'm not even sure they knew where to send their September rent checks. So I just wanted to go on record here, this supermarket, the surrounding buildings and businesses are absolutely core to the daily life in Amagansett. They're not glitzy hip or, to use the Hamptons' word, upscale businesses, not that the prices aren't high, but they are quintessential real-life, deeply local representations of a laid-back vibe, an aesthetic, a landscape that really define a large part of our community character and traditions here in Amagansett and also East Hampton. So my ask today, how these properties might be altered or redeveloped in the future and what might happen to the existing businesses, is something that I hope will be protected to the extent possible by relevant town boards and committees going forward. I also ask that our citizens will have a meaningful opportunity to gain understanding of the plans early on in the process and be able to provide thoughtful input that will be well considered about what happens next. Finally, just to wrap up, to the extent the Board can in any way be proactive around this would be appreciated, and even beyond that, beyond this one particular item, to the extent the Board going forward can inspire, if not require, fuller transparency around development in the town more broadly, I do think that would benefit East Hampton. So as always, thank you for the opportunity to comment and share my thoughts.
Thanks for calling, Jane.
Onto the next caller. Hello, caller. You're on the air.
Yeah?
Yes, you are.
Hello. Yeah, hi, it's Bruce Nellapinski, Three Mile Harbor. Didn't see too many tumbleweeds last Tuesday, but hopefully there were a few. Calling because years ago I worked on a speed limit for Three Mile Harbor Road, and I recently heard that the town board had taken that up again, and one of the things that I remember from back then was some town board members didn't want to be reducing speed limits to 30 miles an hour across the board, but when I was doing my homework on the CAC, the chief police in the police department gave us records that indicated that Three Mile Harbor Road was the place with the most car accidents in the town of East Hampton at the time. I don't know if that's still the case, but it's certainly a good justification for discussing the speed limit. The other problem with doing the homework was that it seems like the county is involved with portions of Three Mile Harbor Road, if not all of it. I'm not sure anymore, and I don't know how far you guys have gone, but I'm sure you're following it up, and I'd love to hear where the speed limit reduction stands on Three Mile Harbor, because this summer was quite a racket, and it still continues morning, noon, and night. People up north of Abraham's Path on Three Mile Harbor Road, they have a raceway for about a quarter of a mile in front of the harbor, and then it gets very, very curvy and dangerous. So anything you can tell, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Bruce. I believe the county road ends around Copiece, just past the head of the harbor, and then from there on, it's considered town highway. And, you know, you are correct that Three Mile Harbor is one of the most dangerous roads within the township, and I think certainly a 30-mile-hour speed limit's justified on that curvy section of road. It's narrow, has no shoulders, and there have been a number of accidents on it. So we appreciate your call.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to next caller. Hello, caller, ending 5009. You are on the air. Hello, caller, ending 5009. You are on the air. I'm not getting anything, and that's our last caller, and there we go.
Okay, thank you very much, Jason. At this point, we'll go on to our work session agenda. Do we have Lauren Steinberg on the meeting?
Yes, we do. I shall let her write in.
She'll be introducing and helping us with the discussion about the New York Stretch Energy Code, which is an update to our energy efficiency within the township. Good morning, Lauren. How are you today?
Morning, I'm well, thank you. How are you?
You're well, thank you.
Good. Okay, so the Stretch Energy Code is something that we've talked about a couple times for a while now, and since the last public hearing, actually at the last public hearing, we discussed some changes that we needed to make to the draft of the legislation for the town to adopt the Stretch Code based on directive that we received from the state and some feedback that we received from builders and hertz readers just in helping to clarify some of the directive that the code is giving. So I just wanted to go through some of the significant changes to the draft of the code prior to another public hearing. So the changes, in order that they appear on the, in the draft, start with added language to Section 2B and 3A, which sever Section R 403.6.2 of the Stretch Code, and that compliance with that section would not be enforced by the local law. This section of the Stretch Code mandates the use of heat recovery ventilation and energy recovery ventilation systems in Climate Zones 5 and 6, and any balanced ventilation solution in Climate Zone 4, which is Long Island, in order to satisfy mechanical ventilations or mechanical ventilations or requirement for new construction. However, the state realized that this provision conflicted with a provision of the 2020 Residential Code, which allows for ventilation to be provided through the use of either exhaust-only, supply-only, or a balanced combination of the two. So our justification for including language that severs that section of the Stretch Code is based on that language around the types of mechanical ventilation required is found in the Residential Code for New York State, not the Energy Code. So this provision of New York Stretch, if it remains to be included in the local law, would be an amendment to the Uniform Code, not the Energy Code. So adopting a more restrictive local standard for construction to the Uniform Code is subject to a notice of petition for approval by the Code Council. And the state directed that municipalities that adopted the Stretch Code, or that are considering adoption of the Stretch Code, would either need to file that petition, or alternatively can sever Sections R 403 dot six dot two from local adoption of New York Stretch. And so we're proposing severance because, you know, not enforcing this section won't significantly impact the energy conservation benefits of the code. And it, you know, we think it might be favorable to builders as well, since the balanced ventilation systems can be costly. Builders can still utilize them if desired, but by severing this section, it no longer makes them mandatory for new construction. So the, the other change that we made to the draft from the last public hearing is to add clarifying language to Section 3B, that newly built and substantially reconstructed, detached one or two family dwellings must achieve the appropriate HERS index score, and must comply with all requirements of Section R 406 of the State Energy Code as amended by New York Stretch. And this added language, it doesn't change anything in terms of HERS compliance. That must be followed for residential buildings, but rather directs the builder to the section of the State Code and the New York Stretch Code that they must follow. An addition of this language was, at the request of some builders that we received feedback from, just to make the compliance pathway clearer for them, and easier to pinpoint where they need to look in the code. We also added a new section, 3D, for multifamily buildings, stating that multifamily buildings must comply with the State Code as amended by New York Stretch, and may follow any of the given compliance pathways in New York Stretch. And allowing multifamily to use any of the compliance pathways, we think would be, we think is beneficial, because it can be a little more complicated and difficult to calculate a HERS index for a multifamily building. You'd have to decide whether to calculate for the whole building, or for individual units, possibly on a case-by-case basis. And if unit by unit, you would need to decide how many units would need to be rated, how to handle common areas versus dwelling units, things like that. So although it can be done, and it has been done, it seems like it would be beneficial to allow more flexibility here. We discussed this with Ann Glennon, and she's in favor of this addition to make compliance for multifamily buildings, you know, which in East Hampton, our affordable housing, a little less complicated. So that's why we wanted to pull out that section and refer to multifamily specifically. And then we added Section 3F, which clarified compliance requirements for alterations and additions. So basically, projects that don't meet the criteria for substantial reconstruction in both residential and commercial properties. And alterations and additions must comply with Chapter Five of the State Code, which is the section of the code that applies to existing structures as modified by New York Stretch. And this, again, was just a clarifying addition, per some feedback we got from builders that we spoke to Ann about, just to give a clearer directive to builders and HERS raters of which section the code they must comply with. So it's really mostly just adding clarifying language with, with some of these code provisions, and then the severance of the ventilation requirement that conflicts with the Uniform Code.
Any questions or comments on the amendments?
Yeah, Lauren, can you just translate a little bit on the first item, the ventilation equipment, to give, give a layman a little bit better understanding of what, what that equipment is? And I'm a little unclear on that.
Sure. So the, you know, without being an expert in, in building, but the heat recovery ventilation and energy recovery ventilation are more energy efficient ventilation systems. So one of the major benefits of the Stretch Code is to improve insulation in a home, so you're not, you don't have that many air leaks. So in doing that, you need to improve ventilation, so the house isn't too tight, isn't suffocating. And so one of the most efficient, or some of the most efficient equipment are these HRV and ERV systems for, for balanced ventilation, but they can also be costly. But the Residential Code addresses ventilation requirements that satisfy the needs for these codes. So it's not necessary that we keep that section in, or that we apply for petition to be able to implement a stricter code. We can just sever that section.
So Jeff, you may recall that we implemented that heat recovery type system on the manor houses, and that to improve the ventilation there as well. So it's that, it's basically that type of, that type of technology. Are there any other questions or comments on the amendments?
I do. It's more administrative. So Lauren, we're looking to notice this on September 23rd, and hear it on October 21st. So the earliest we could adopt it would be November 4th. And if we're still in Zoom and transcripts need to be posted, it might even be, you know, December 2nd. And I just wonder if instead of having throughout the code where it says effective October 21st, since that's the public hearing date, it say effective maybe January 1st of 2022.
Or you could state effective upon adoption.
Yeah.
Right. Adoption and filing, we could say.
Yeah, can't be until after it's filed with the state. Right.
Right.
So that's a good, that's a good catch, Kathy, on that. So Lauren, just for our viewers, can you just give a brief overview as to why the New York Stretch Code and what it really does? You know, we, the town has implemented, you know, HERS rating and adopted higher energy efficiency standards, and this is taking it to the, to the next level. Can you just, for people's general understanding of what we're trying to do here, give a little bit more?
Sure. So the New York Stretch is a voluntary and locally adaptable Stretch Energy Code, which was developed by the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority as an overlay to the State Energy Conservation and Construction Code, which is abbreviated as the State Energy Code. So by building to the New York Stretch Code as opposed to the minimum State Energy Codes, it provides an overall increased efficiency of 11% overbuilding to the State Energy Code. So that's, you know, building residential and commercial buildings that have a lower energy consumption, require less energy to operate, and therefore produce less greenhouse gas emissions, and have lower operating costs, because the less energy you use, the lesser bills are going to be. And, you know, we've discussed in the past, too, that there is, because of those energy savings over the lifetime of the equipment and, you know, residency in the home, there is a return on investment for these energy savings for both commercial and residential building. And, you know, we've had a couple of work session discussions, we had the public hearing, and, you know, we've had a lot of people call in about it. And, you know, just basically reiterating that the Stretch Code is a, a good model, statewide model for municipalities to meet their energy and climate goals by accelerating the savings obtained through local building energy codes, and reducing greenhouse gas emissions from the, the building sector, which is a significant contributor to, to greenhouse gases.
Thank you, Lauren. Are there any other question or comments from board members?
I just want to thank Lauren for really getting this completed and staying with it, because we've talked about it for probably a good four, five, maybe even six months, Lauren. And, you know, and we talked to NYSERDA and their experts at a work session along with Lauren, and, you know, she's really done a, a good job, a great task in making sure that it fits our code. And I think this is really the forerunner to a net zero houses that are probably coming down the pike in, in some way. So this is just the next step before we get to net zero. And thank you, Lauren, for all the work that you've done with this. I really appreciate it. And so does the Energy Sustainability Committee.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, thank you to the board members for always being so supportive and, you know, prioritizing the importance of energy sustainability and reducing our impact on climate change. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Lauren.
Thank you.
So we'll now move on to proposed amendments to Chapter 25, Code of Ethics and Ethic Board Correspondence. And I believe we have Hugh King with us, Jason?
Yes, we do. And he is being led into the room right now.
Great. He is our chairman of the Ethics Board.
And Hugh is away from his computer right now.
Okay, so.
There he's back, hey!
Hey.
Hello, Hugh.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. Thank you for your making time for the concerns and interests of the Board of Ethics.
Our pleasure. Thank you for serving on that board as chair.
Now, we also have with us today members Jim Brooks and Judy Samuelson, and I believe Fran Donovan. Gina was going to try to make the meeting, and I don't know how this bodes, but the two reverends are away.
Okay, I am letting Judith Samuelson into the meeting. I have Olivia Brooks in the waiting room, but I'm guessing that's just the computer that's being used. And who's the last one, my friend?
Fran Donovan.
Friend? I got, I got a person by the name of Bruce. I got.
That would be, that would be Fran.
All right, all right.
Yeah, that Bruce. Bruce was just on, wasn't he?
He was.
Okay, is there anyone that we're missing?
I'm here, Judy Samuelson.
Hi, Judith, how are you? Well, welcome to all. Thank you for joining us today. And I'll turn it over to you, Hugh.
Well, the first three things that we need to talk about, or we should talk about if the Board wants to, are the proposed changes to the code. The first one was having to do with people who, if they're serving on a national or a local political committee, a chairperson or vice chairperson, or on the committee, they can't be part of appointed or elective offices, and there's a whole list of them. And the one that was left out was the Board of Ethics. We felt that the Board of Ethics should not be part of any, you know, should be included in that, in those prohibitions, that's what I'm saying. Does that make sense?
Yes, to me. I think we'd like to add that language to include members of the Board of Ethics.
Yeah. The town attorney, yeah, the town attorney has put this together for us, by the way. So if you don't like it, it's its fault. Okay, all right. And then the second one is, in number 12 on the financial disclosure form, it asks if any of your clients or business persons have come before a board that you're serving on. So you should list them. And then it says, what did you do for those people as far as a job? But the third thing is not there. What did you do as a board member? Did you recuse yourself? Did you disclose? Sometimes the town attorney says disclosing is enough. And there's no room in the, in the financial disclosure form to write down what you did. So we, we felt maybe that should be added. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Two so far. Okay, now the future employment one, I think you're probably going to have a problem with. But what the town attorney has done is he has taken the case about future employment, and he's added something to it. I don't know if you have that in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Okay, okay. The only catch is that the South Hampton Code of Ethics has a 12-month period where you can't do it, can't be, come back and serve as a lobbyist or represent a client before any board or agency, you know, in which you had taken part. So we thought that was important, too, to clarify that. But I know that probably will be up for discussion. So that's the third thing.
On the third thing, public officers' law, I believe the state has two categories. One is a two-year bar, and the other is a lifetime bar, depending on position and what the, what the particular issue is.
Okay, well, that's up to the board.
Right. So the state's more restrictive, I guess, than Southampton. And I don't believe that the, the version that the town attorney circulated had a, a date.
It didn't. It did not. Correct.
Is it the Board of Ethics recommendation that it be a lifetime bar?
No, we have no recommendation. That'll be up to you, I think. We just think it should have been clarified a little bit more. Right, the town attorney?
Yeah, I mean, I think in some instances, when you've participated in an application, I'm not sure you should have any, you know, now you're not working for the town anymore. I'm not sure there should be any limitation if you were involved in that application while you were a town employee. In those instances, you're just going to be precluded, no matter how long the application might run. I don't think you can step back into it on the other side.
Right. And that's basically what the state legislation address is with the lifetime bar. So I think, you know, there probably is applicability, you know, for a lifetime, justification for a lifetime bar in certain circumstances. And perhaps the less involved should be, you know, a period of years rather than a lifetime.
I had a question on that. I don't, I'm not sure that any time limit is really necessary, because, you know, if you've participated substantially and directly in, in application, and are barred from coming in on the other side of that application, the duration of it's going to be the duration of the application. So I'm not sure it makes sense to put in a, you know, a lifetime bar. I think it's, it, it sort of is self-enforcing. But my, my question, you know, as an attorney, is, you know, what constitutes direct and substantial participation? For example, you know, I may have directly and substantially participated in the Hamlet Study Reports. Does that mean that, you know, if a property that was included in the Hamlet Study Report comes before the board, that I can't comment on it or participate in it? So I'm a little bit wary of, of the lack of definition of what direct and substantial involvement means. I understand where, you know, that makes sense. It's easily understood if you're like a planning board member or a zoning board member. But on the town board, oftentimes, we have, I would call it indirect contact with properties that might later, you know, be subject of applications. And, you know, for example, when we do long-term planning, like the Hamlet Study Reports, or consider actions under the Hamlet Study Reports, and I don't think that kind of involvement should bar future participation in, you know, for example, a property that was part of the Hamlet Study Report. So I think it needs a little more precision there to, a little bit better definition. I certainly understand the idea that, I'm just trying to think of an application, you know, where we, we are directly. that, I'm just trying to think of an application, you know, where we are directly, for example, where the lead agency, and then it would be inappropriate for somebody who participated in discussions as the lead agency to come in and represent the applicant later on. I mean, I think that's the fundamental thing you're trying to avoid, is you had some contact with an application and have some knowledge of it, and then the, then the owner of that property hires you to be on the other side. That, to me, is obviously a conflict. But I do have a little problem with the lack of precision in the direct and substantial participation language.
So I think a lot of that is probably addressed in the state legislation. Perhaps we should look at that for a guide.
I didn't see it, but I can take another look. As I said, I do think that what you're trying to, I really think what we're generally trying to prevent is if you were on a planning board, or if you're on the town board reviewing an application, you don't want that person later being hired for the applicant on that case to come back in when something changes or they want to make a change on it. That, to me, is pretty clear.
So I think in the state legislation, it says personal participation and direct concern in a specific case requires more than an awareness of or informal conversation concerning the circumstances. So, you know, the example you cite with the Wayne Scott Hamlet Study, it's more than just an awareness or informal conversation.
Yeah, I agree. But I don't think.
The mere acquaintance with or knowledge of fact circumstances is insufficient to trigger the bar. But I think it would be hard maybe to argue that a board member would be in that situation regarding like the Hamlet Study or the properties in Wayne Scott that were rezoned as a result.
Well, we might want to make that clear because we, you know, we often, as a town board, you know, engage in long-term planning that can hit a variety of properties, and we're intimately involved in it. But I'm not sure that that should preclude, you know, a member of the town board subsequently from engaging with a property owner that was, you know, had one of many properties subject to a broader, you know, planning scheme or plan or change.
Anytime that we make a decision, particularly a zoning decision, we've, we have affected properties. So I don't think that, that you can then represent those. You can't have a vote on those properties and then represent those properties later.
I'm not so sure about that because if, you know, oftentimes people come in on applications for other, they're not coming in to argue the zoning. They may come in with a planning board to change their site plan, or to do a lot line modification, or, you know, add another building. And I'm not sure that having participated in the overall planning scheme should preclude you from being involved in those kinds of more particularized applications. That's what I'm saying.
Although we have the ability to appoint the planning board and the ZBA members. So there's that kind of a reach too. I, you know, so I'm not sure if I'm tracking what you're saying, Jeff.
What I'm saying is that we do long-range planning. For example, the Hamlet Study plans, and it touches many properties. And we may debate what they want to be zoned and what they don't, and, you know, look at what the overall direction of Wayne Scott or Montauk should be. But applications for specific properties that are located within that general planning that we've done, I don't think, I don't think that kind of involvement should preclude later involvement. If a property owner in, say, the Hamlet Study, the Wayne Scott Center of the Hamlet Study, or in Montauk, comes in and wants to move a building and change his site plan, I mean, I don't think that we've had specific, you know, and I wanted to use the words, but I'm not going to be able to find it substantive, I don't think we've had direct and substantial participation in that individual lot by, by participating in a more broad brain, broad range planning that encompassed many lots, of which that was one. So I don't think that should preclude participation in one of these more individualized applications that may subsequently come forward. This obviously doesn't involve sitting town board members. But for example, it could involve a sitting town board member who was a planner, or who was an attorney. And, you know, a year or two years later, somebody comes in and says, oh, I'm, I have, I don't know, I have a store with parking, and I want to change it and move my parking. So I got to go in and do a site plan modification. Can you help me? And I'm saying that I don't think participating in an overall planning scheme is the kind of direct and substantial involvement with that property that should preclude helping that landowner.
So you mentioned, you know, Wayne Scott Hamlet Study as an example. And yet, you know, we looked at very specific properties following the recommendations of that Hamlet Study in rezoning. And we discussed whether or not they should be in an LBO, or they should be neighborhood business. And we looked at very specific properties as part of that. And to Kathy's point, I think, you know, board members appoint planning and zoning and ARB members. So anyone representing in front of them has had a direct impact and influence over their position. To then, to then be acting as an agent for bringing forward an application under those circumstances would seem to be, you know, problematic.
I think you're missing the point. The point I'm making is a little bit more nuanced than that. If, if we're dealing with zoning, and we look at a property and we go, this should be LBO, this should be neighborhood business, that's the decision that we're making in a general way. I don't think that if we, being involved on that level, that we should represent a property owner who comes in and says, I want to change my zoning. I don't like LBO, or I don't like neighborhood business. That's the issue that our general planning touched on. But if, you know, five years from now, or one year from now, a property owner who's, who's now in, in the zoning that we decided, wants to come into the planning board and says, I want to modify my site plan. I got three buildings. I want to consolidate. I want to change parking. I don't think that should preclude participation from a board member because he or she participated in that more general kind of planning about the zoning itself. And it does, I don't think it matters that, that, you know, you were on the board when they were appointed. Once you're off the board, they're the appointed members. You know, the difficulty in dealing with members of appointed boards when you're the, an active member of this board, is that we're actually, to some extent, the employer of that person. Or we can have an impact on that person. We could tell them we don't like the work he's doing, or what have you. But once you're off the board, you don't have that anymore. So I don't see.
I disagree with that as well. I don't think we do have that kind of influence. And that's the whole purpose of them being appointed, is that you, they can't be dismissed, and you can't, you know, they're.
Yeah, I disagree with Jeff's last comment about, about being able to influence board members. But I do see where he's coming from, particularly when he gets to the Hamlet Studies. The Hamlet Study is a very overarching document for the five specific hamlets of a lot of properties there. So, you know, the substantive issue that Jeff, I believe, is talking about, if you put a historical district overlay or LBO overlay, then but come back in, but want to deal with someone's lighting, or someone's parking on there then too. That's, that's not being decided necessarily in the Hamlet Study specific to each property on there. I can't really think of many other documents in the town right now that we have prepared or are preparing besides the comp study with LWRP, which are almost 20 years old, to have that high of a large overarching footprint on town policy. So I could see a little bit of that. But, but I do agree that we have to take measures to make sure that elected officials can't come back for a certain length of time, make sure and influence, use their knowledge and influence onto specific site plans.
Judy, I see you have your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. I think you could come up with example after example. But I think the intention of the Ethics Committee was just to put a little more definition around not representing a client when you're off the board, who you are directly involved with when you are on the board. And I think all we were asking, Peter brought it up, what the state does, what Southampton does, but we do nothing. So I think we're merely asking for some sort of statement about how maybe a year, you should wait a year before you represent someone whose case you adjudicated, or, you know, whatever the right term would be, when you are on the board. I don't think we have to, you know, make it a rigid restriction. And I don't think we have to cover, or you don't have to cover every eventuality. We just wanted to define it a little more. Would you agree, Hugh? Is that not what we?
I agree with everything Judy said.
Okay. And I take it that's why you put direct and substantial, that language, direct and substantial.
Yeah.
So I think that's reasonable language, you know.
I think there's also, what we have here is when, if there's a question that that post-elected official might have, go to the Ethics Board for a determination. That's why we have the Ethics Boards there. And I think they, the Ethics Board, whoever it might be at that time, will then determine what's direct and substantial. So I appreciate these, these balances and checks that we have.
Well, I'd like to just add another check and balance, and that is that lawyers themselves have rules on conflicts. So, you know, attorneys are pretty restricted on the basis of conflict. So it's, it's, there's some oversight over the legal practice itself. It's more regulated than a planner or an architect. I mean, we have definite rules on, on conflict.
But not every board member is a lawyer.
No, I'm saying, yeah, I agree. I agree. I'm just saying, when it comes to lawyers, you have another, you have another layer of protection.
Kathy, I see you wanted to.
Yeah, I do. Because, you know, this, you know, D, future employment starts with no public officer or employee, public official. So it doesn't just apply to town board members. It applies to, you know, folks that work in the Natural Resources Department, or the Planning Department upon their resignation or retirement and what have you. So when I went back into definitions to look up public officer or employee, that definition isn't there. What is there is municipal officer or employee. So I think we need to go back to the definition section to make sure that that's squared. And I believe that the definition for municipal officer/employee needs more specificity. So, because it's, to me, it's a little loose. It says, an officer or employee of the town, whether paid or unpaid, including members of any administrative board, commission, or other agency thereof. No person shall be deemed to be a town officer or employee solely by reason of being a volunteer fireman or civil defense volunteer, except a chief engineer or assistant chief engineer. I mean, I think we need to go in and, and name the departments or name the boards so that, you know, we know exactly what we're referring to when we get to that section of 2513D about future employment.
Right. And I would suggest again that we take a look at the New York State Code Regarding Ethics for some guidance on language and definitions as well.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think increasing the specificity of the definitions is a good idea. You certainly don't want, for example, a planner who participated in a case to turn around and get hired by that applicant and sort of repudiate what he did in the case, he or she did in the case. You know, you definitely want to make sure that that's denominated as a conflict.
I think Councilwoman Gonzalez's point about actually naming who's involved here or listing could clear up a lot of the confusion. And I want to thank the board for the thorough discussion of that proposal. We'll leave it up to you and the town attorney. And then maybe if you come up with something, we could take a look at it too. Would that be all right?
Absolutely. We would very much appreciate having the board review it and comment.
And as liaison to the Ethics Board, I'm more than happy to, to, you know, oversee this.
You are. All right.
I didn't know that.
Well, I'm liaison to the town clerk, so by default, I'm liaison to the Ethics Board.
Okay. Okay, is that, finished with those three?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all right. Now, let's go to the last one. And Board of Ethics is just sorry that it's just turned into a contrempt, or whatever the term is. But the purpose of the letter from our, from our standpoint was for future boards and maybe future employees of the town who ask for an advisory opinion. The timeframe to us is important. There are emergencies that come up that can't be helped. But we'd like to reaffirm the idea that time is needed to come up with an opinion. In this case, because of the work of the town attorney and the town clerk, you were able to get an opinion through their work and through the efforts of the Board of Ethics, who agreed to meet, you know, via the email internet. The other thing we want to encourage is that our correspondence with the board, it should be kept confidential unless we agree that it should be put out in the public sphere. And then the third thing I think we were concerned about is if our words are put out in the public, they need to be portrayed accurately. And we were afraid that that did not happen in this case. So that's basically what we're asking for here. Board members, Judy, do you have anything to add to what I just said? Do the people come in now?
I would be adding to it at greater length, and, and maybe that's not even needed. But I think we just completely set aside what started this discussion in the first place. You know, it's water under the bridge. But I looked at the, the code itself, the Code of Ethics, Chapter 25, talks about rules of ethical conduct which must be observed if a high degree of moral contact, conduct is to be obtained, and if public confidence is to be maintained in our unit of local government. Basically, the code is saying that the officers of the town have to adhere to a higher standard for the sake of public opinion. And I think that each council member is aware of that and has a personal Code of Ethics. So the broader issue of our role and how we should work, I wondered if we could maybe address it because maybe we're not sure of our roles vis each other. With our opinion requested on May 6, we delivered an opinion to the town clerk on May 7, but the written opinion subsequently sort of turned into political football. So we just, we were dismayed, and we stopped taking part in the discussion. And what we'd like, and why we asked to have the statement read into the minutes, is that the board is entitled to more than one day to fact find and confer. And the timeframe offered kind of indicates a lack of respect for the opinion and the weight of the. for the opinion and the, the weight of the Board of Ethics. The second thing that we wanted to emphasize is that our opinions are intended for the individual requesting our opinion and the entire town council. As an ethics board, we are scrupulously nonpartisan. And we object to our opinions being used in any other way. So, you know, I, I think that you know what we're saying. And I also just wanted to say that it's an honor to serve on this board. And I hope sharing our views enhance the goodwill and spirit of cooperation among members of the council and the Town Board of Ethics. We're not always going to be in these roles and you're not always going to be in yours. So maybe if it's laid out, it will be a guide to future citizens who are in our roles. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. A member, may I keep going, Mr. Supervisor?
Absolutely, Hugh.
Thank you. James Brooks, Mr. Brooks?
I, I'd rather not follow up on her speech because I can't say it any more eloquently than she just did, Hugh.
Okay. Fran, Fran Donovan?
I agree with that. And I also just want to emphasize, it does feel like a big honor to be part of this. And I want to thank the fellow Ethics Board members for being, you know, respectful and intelligent and good communicators. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. You can keep talking.
And especially, I love you.
I, I think we have equal respect for the town council. And, you know, it's behind us. And I just hope that it's helpful to those who succeed us.
Yeah, and I just want to say one more thing and then you can have Addis. The, one of the things that, when this first came up, we did have some questions that unfortunately we didn't ask, and I guess we should have, but under the time constraint, it didn't seem like we had time. You know, like, what was the purpose? Why did the board finally decide that they needed to ask for an opinion? And, you know, why did they get stuck up pretty close to the event? And did everybody on the board ask for an opinion? That's another thing we might have liked to know. And if people didn't ask for an opinion, why not? And who was going to get the opinion? When it was, when it was delivered? And we didn't know at the time, and this is my fault, that only three people had asked for the opinion. I didn't know that. And then the, luckily, the, I don't, we did get to an opinion by Friday, but the town attorney did not realize that or did not know that. So he elicited opinion to the three board members who asked for it. And, but ours was exactly the same. That's where we took our opinion from, the research that the town attorney done. But I might, I also think I would have asked, or I might have wanted to ask, did he find other dissenting opinions to his opinion? He did find, you know, cases and an opinion saying that if you were performing a governmental function, you were able to go to the meeting. But did he find any opinions that discourage that? Now, he may have done that, you know, work. So this is not a criticism of the town attorney. So I want to thank our town clerk, too, Carol, for, you know, voicing all this stuff upon us, that it came from John, then it came to her, and then it came to the board members. And I want to thank the board members for being on task to get this done. So we're not looking for trouble, okay? The, the Town Board of Ethics is honored to serve. And we certainly have got along with the board and other boards in the past. So this is just a glitch. We hope that can be rectified. And that's it. I think.
I think we should just draw a curtain over, you know, that was May, this is September.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
So I appreciate, first of all, let me state that I really appreciate all the work the Ethics Board does. And, and, you know, while I, I certainly did apologize for the shortness
You did.
of time that you had to render a decision. The easy answer is that questions were raised close to the event about whether or not it was appropriate for town board members to, to attend. And I, and I think, you know, in reviewing the statutes and the case law and the opinions that, you know, when, when your board rendered the decision saying that this was, you know, a widely attended public event, that, you know, it met the criteria on a number of counts and, you know, that, that we were permitted to attend, that it wasn't a violation of ethics to do so, that we had the, the public purpose of presenting and honoring our frontline healthcare workers and our food pantry workers. And Mr. Bon Jovi and his Soul Kitchen Foundation, which I think contributed close to a million dollars towards providing food for our local residents who were incredibly challenged during the pandemic. We had volunteers from the town's COVID Vaccination Center who attended. And to recognize on behalf of the entire town, the efforts of so many people who were critical in helping us get through the worst dark days of the pandemic, that that was an appropriate, you know, activity for a town board to be participating in. And so I appreciate the very short period of time that you had to render your decision. I guess I have some question about whether or not making public a determination of the Ethics Board, when a, when an individual requests the Ethics Board to, to make a determination, that that person requesting it can hold that in confidence. But if challenged on the ethics, then it is appropriate, I believe, for that individual to then show that they did follow the proper practice and that they did get a determination. And I think that's what, that is what occurred. And I think it's important to, to put a finer point on that as well.
Okay.
So, so again, I appreciate, you know, all of your efforts. You know, we apologize for the short period of time that you might have had to render a decision. I believe you made the right decision. I believe it is appropriate for town board members to celebrate, you know, the hard work and efforts of those who volunteered and contributed under circumstance. And that's really all I have to say at this point.
I, I'd like to interject a comment here because I think that your remarks do not capture what happened in this instance. And I'm not sure that the public watching this is going to even understand what we're talking about because everybody's being very dainty and dancing around the issues that were more dramatically disclosed. First of all, you know, it's not politicizing an issue to discuss an ethics policy and our behavior and, and discuss whether or not it complies with a limitation on taking a gift in excess of $75. The people have a right to know that their officials on the town board, and particularly the highest official on the town board, is acting in compliance with the code. And the letter that the Ethics Board wrote subsequent, we can talk about how the opinion was rushed, which, which is disclosed in the subsequent letter that the Ethics Board wrote. They basically said that they did not have, they weren't given the time to ask questions or do a full analysis of the situation and that we had had a long time to give them appropriate notice beforehand. They were also concerned that, at least, at least as I understand it, that the ethics opinion that they did hurriedly agree to was only distributed to four out of the five members of the board. I was not included in that. And in fact, the supervisor kind of held it in his back pocket as a surprise when I raised the issue in a work session and said, "This was not an appropriate event to attend and to accept that kind of lavish hospitality." The Ethics Board itself was not happy with the situation. And I don't think there's any reason to draw a curtain over this and ignore this. This is one of the most important issues we deal with. We need to have the public understand that our public officials, particularly the highest ranking public official, is acting ethically. And when the Board of Ethics unanimously wrote its letter saying that they did not believe that the procedure that was followed was done in a manner that would ensure confidence in the local unit of government. And when they tell us that they didn't have ample time to discuss or to raise questions on it, that's a serious problem. And they were also, they were also unhappy with the fact that the opinion was distributed but not to all of the people involved. And I was the excluded member that, in that.
Did you, did you, I mean, I think with Judy.
Excuse me, David, excuse me.
Let Jeff finish.
And you just rolled your questions to the end.
I know he paused. I know he paused and you thought you had an opening, David. But let Jeff continue because I know he's got a lot more to say.
I do, I do. And, you know, I noticed in the code that it says, "A request, a request for an advisory opinion shall be confidential, but the Board of Ethics may publish such opinions, provided the name of the requesting person or other identifying details aren't including, included, and the Board of Ethics shall endeavor, to the extent practicable, to publish its advisory opinions so as to assist town officers and employees in complying with applicable laws." I think that when an issue is raised on the ethical behavior of a town board member, every town board member should have access to whatever opinions the Ethics Board renders, whether they, you know, acquit somebody or are troubled by somebody. We all should know, the governing body of this town should know what the opinions of the Ethics Board are about our behavior. And the Ethics Board also went on and said it was troubled by the fact that the board did not follow its advice, which was not to take, not to take non-paying guests to the event. So there, there are serious problems here. And the reason that I raised the issue is because, that it's not, not because I don't care about honoring a benefactor to the town food pantries. And I do honor Bon Jovi's contributions. And I also acknowledge that the clubhouse made its, you know, property and buildings available for deploying those foods that were donated. And I, and I honor that, and I honor the first responders. But we have an ethics code that prevents us from taking gifts worth in excess of $75. And this was lavish, lavish hospitality by a business that we regulate. They're in front of our boards. And, and the public has the right to know that, at a minimum, that as board members, we are neutral arbiters i- if they come before us. And by taking a lavish five-course dinner with an open bar and attending a private concert with a very substantial monetary value, I think creates a suggestion of appearance, an appearance of impropriety. And it's not the kind of appearance that I wanted to make in front of my constituents because these are delicate issues. And I am concerned about the access that an active business might have on town board members. And I was concerned enough about, you know, Peter's granting access to people that shouldn't be granted access, and it came out in the Durie case. And that, and these are real significant issues that our constituents are entitled to know fully about. And the way, what I, I feel that the way, what this shows is that there was an ethical blindness, or at least an ethical sensitivity in taking this kind of hospitality. And, and, and again, you know, Peter's done whatever he can do today to, you know, soft sell it as just, it was an honor to these people and that's what we were doing. But there's, there is a stricter and more important issue here. And that is that we should not be taking lavish hospitality gifts. We should not be giving special access to businesses that we like or favor. We should not be dealing with wealthy and powerful business owners behind closed doors because it violates the fundamental purpose of our ethics law. And it's, and it's stated, you know, right, right at the beginning of it. And, and, and some of the board members have, you know, have, have mentioned it, that it's designed, you know, to create a high degree of moral conduct, that the East Hampton recognizes that these rules of ethical conduct must be observed if a high degree of moral conduct is to be obtained and public confidence is to be maintained in our unit of government. And the purpose of promulgating the rules of ethical conduct is to instill that high degree of moral conduct and to guide official conduct. I think the board failed, it failed to honor our ethical rules. I don't like what it says about how we do business. I don't like what it says about who gets access. And I think you put blinders on when you say, "Oh, it didn't, it wouldn't affect, it wouldn't affect me at all, wouldn't affect me at all." I just think that that is, it was an inappropriate reaction. And frankly, you know, the, I read the opinion that was issued by John Joe Nicky. And I have ultimate respect for John. I know he's a good lawyer. At the same time, I also know that when lawyers rush, that it's difficult to produce a thorough and searching product. And I don't think that, that citing an example where a county official attended a charity funded by the county and presented a plaque and accepted a dinner is comparable to go into a super private event. This was not generally open to the public. You had to, there was security outside. And, and the, and the type of hospitality is much, much greater than what the example given to the Ethics Board was. So I think the Ethics Board, I'll finish. I think the Ethics Board was correct in criticizing the way it was handled. I don't think it would ever happen again. I don't ever want to get sandbagged as the only town board member that doesn't know that they've issued an opinion. And if the issue comes up again, I'm going to say the same thing I said last time. I don't need an Ethics Board to tell me not to take lavish gifts that are worth more than 75 bucks. I know that. And that's why I didn't do it. And that's why I left.
Wow, that was, that was quite a speech you made there, Jeff.
I was answering your speech.
Yeah, it wasn't so much a speech as just thanking the members of the Ethics Board for their work. And the Ethics Board is here, members are here. They can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the Ethics Board rendered that the town board, so attendance at this event was appropriate. If, if that's not clearly stated enough for you in the letter, Jeff, that we got ahead of attending the event, then, you know, obviously this has just rendered your grandstanding and political maneuvering to an all-new level. You made several comments. I think you neglected to tell the public that you actually attended this event. You told your fellow town board members that you were leaving the event early because of a Zoom birthday call. You never stayed for the public presentation of the proclamations and honored and thanked those who were in attendance, who volunteered. You never did that. You drank three glasses of wine at a minimum and then drove yourself home. I think there are serious ethical problems with doing that. And, you know, I, I just find it really repulsive that you continue to try to assassinate the character of the town board and undermine the town board. You certainly could have expressed your concerns to your fellow town board members that you've expressed here. You never did so. You had that opportunity, you neglected to do so. Instead, you decided to play gotcha at the next work session by bringing up in your liaison report, you know, which, again, I just, I find your behavior repulsive.
You know what, Peter? I find your behavior completely inappropriate. You, excuse me, I, I have a right, I have a right to answer this.
No, I have a new button for you. Do it.
I am going to answer, I'm going to answer.
Can I just ask that we, that we return to identified meeting? And you had an opportunity to speak several times, Jeff.
I'm going to say one thing.
Excuse me, Jeff.
You're ignoring the fact that your own Ethics Board.
Please let the supervisor run the meeting, Jeff.
Your own Ethics Board.
And you, can you please?
Wrote a follow-up letter to this board and said, and was highly critical of the way it was handled. It was the Ethics Board that wrote that letter. And that letter said that the way you behaved did not reassure the public that our board was reliable. was reliable on issues of ethics.
It did not say the way I behaved, Jeff. It did not say the way I behaved.
It said that it was not
You know what, Jeff? I'm going to cut you off. I want to go back to Hugh, who's the Chair of the Ethics Board.
Did Joseph and Lee want to say something? I can wait.
For Hugh, Judith, Mr. Brooks, Fran, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. I understand things that, you know, as far, everything that you presented here today as a town board member, I make sure if I come to Ethics Board for any determinations, which I have done multiple times in the past, I will deal with as much advance notices as I can. I want to make sure I continue having the trust of all of the people that residents of the town of East Hampton. I thank you for your time, and I'm sorry that it's gotten to this point again, because I think your point is well-taken. I heard it loudly. I don't know if all of us have. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, David.
Yes, two things. The Ethics Board never thought that a communication between ourselves and the town board would wind up on Facebook. If someone wants to publish our, we never said that that could be done, number one. And number two, if you're going to quote what the Ethics Board said, you have to do it accurately. And the letter to the newspaper, which portrayed what we said was incorrect, that's the genesis for us writing this.
So Hugh, can you put a finer point on that? Because it was not any other town board member, other than Jeff Bragman, who put that on Facebook. And he obviously, you know, has been communicating with the paper and emphasizing that, even had press conferences over ethics claims.
I published the entire letter. I published the entire letter verbatim on my Facebook page and allowed the public to read it. Peter has a habit of characterizing any action that he does that puts him in a bad light on ethics or inside dealing as politicizing and
Because it's not true. It's just political season.
This is a policy issue that goes to the heart of good governance. And when I published the letter, I published it completely so that the public could read it for themselves. And the Ethics Board was not happy with the way this procedure
What I just heard was that the Chair is unhappy that you published it on Facebook. That's what I just heard.
Well, he wrote a letter that's FOIA-able to all the town board members. This wasn't a confidential communication.
How did you know that?
We don't have a confidential relationship with you, and your own code encourages you
We actually do, Jeff.
... to debate public your decisions. It encourages it. I can read you the statute. I have it right here.
Letters from the Board are confidential unless those who receive them agree to release them.
This was discussed in a board meeting, and all you want to do is cover up what happened.
No, Jeff, I'm not covering anything up. I'm trying to bring light to what actually happened. You tried to set us up, you tried to spring a trap. It didn't work. You're still campaigning on it. Just, come on, stop.
Right, Peter, right, Peter.
It is right.
And you didn't conceal that you had gotten this Ethics Opinion and hold it in your back pocket until everybody on the town board, speaking of it, excuse me, let me finish, and gave it to everybody on the town board purportedly violating confidentiality, except me. And you're accusing me of trying
That's true, Jeff. It's a confidential letter until those who receive it decide to disclose it.
You distributed it to everyone except me.
No, no one else saw that letter, Jeff.
Yes, they all knew, Peter. That's why you were nodding your head at me, saying, "Let him talk, let him talk," because they knew it.
Judy?
Maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but I'm uncomfortable listening to this whole discussion. I feel like it's a family battle, and it's not my family. So with respect, I'm going to leave.
Understood, Judy. And I apologize for the tenor of this, but it is political season, and when an individual tries to bring politics into the town's business, it's a problem.
I totally understand.
I'm sorry, Jeff, let Judith be finished. Stop interrupting.
I
I'm sorry.
She muted herself. I'll mute her.
I'm not too skilled technologically. You know, I'm not making any judgments. I'm just withdrawing from the discussion, and I hope that you will continue to consult us if you have questions on another issue, because really, I never want to hear about this issue again. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith.
Thank you, Judith. We appreciate your service.
And I'm leaving as well. I have to go back to work. Thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you.
We have a great skate park discussion after this. Want to stay?
Thank you. Bye.
Bye, Fran.
Tell Bruce to go.
Hugh, is there anything else that you'd like to say?
We're done, right? That's it?
We're done, Hugh.
Okay, in that case, again, I thank you all for your service to the town, and we appreciate that, and thanks for joining us here today as well. We'll move on now.
There's no meeting on Thursday, right?
That's correct. We'll see you on the 23rd and discuss Village of East Hampton and our history questions.
Okay, see you then. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Bye-bye. Leave the meeting.
Okay, and
So our next topic for discussion today is the Montauk Skate Park renovation design, and David Lees will be presenting that. David's been working directly with a number of folks who've had a great deal of interest in improving that park. And there's been a lot of activity and movement, including creating a design and lots of private fundraising. Hugh, is there anything else that you'd like to say?
Jason, can you just turn off the TV in your background?
Thank you all for your service to the town, and we appreciate that, and thanks for joining us here today as well.
Okay, I muted that feed.
Yes, thank you very much. We have Nate is with us. Great. Thank you very much, everyone. We have our power design team for the Montauk Skate Park, the Lars Simonsen Skate Park and renovation and expansion. We are here with John and Jasada Britton from the Montauk Skate Park Coalition. We're here with Matt Jellicoe from L.K. McLean, engineer, and also with Nathan Bemo from Pivot Customs, an American board company who's assisted with the design. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, and let me just facilitate it quickly. I'll put this up. We'll roll through it as a group, and if we have questions from the Board after, please As we know, the Montauk Lions Field and Skate Park has many amenities. We discussed this previously at our February board meeting. The skate park is in this location, the Lars Simonsen Skate Park. It's part of a greater portion of the New York State, the New York State actually bypass of Montauk.
David, you're not sharing the
Sharing with myself, huh? Sorry, guys, I apologize. A little worked up there. So let me get back to it.
You are up.
Thank you very much, Jason. And Kathy, thank you for letting me know. The Montauk Skate Park is on Essex Streets in Montauk. It's part of the greater property that the town has a license agreement from the New York State Parks, including on this specific property from the old Montauk bypass, is the Montauk baseball softball fields, the Hank Zabrowski Fields and Playground, basketball court, and some other recreational facilities. If we go a little further west, we'll see soccer fields that we have, a fishing station, and comes close to other town tennis courts. Again, this is all presented earlier on. The skate park that we currently have was originally built in 1999. I want to thank Len Bernard and Pete Hamerly. I know Len Bernard is watching. He told me he would be. They spirited this project in 1999 for a lot lesser amount of money than we'll probably be spending now on it, but it's had a great use, a great run, and now there's a lot of excitement within the community, residents, the youth, to change the skate park to meet some more challenges in modern times. The town's actions to this point, we have a skate park expansion and park re-envisioned was discussed at this location in 2011, over 10 years ago. In December, the town set up a dedicated reserve specifically for the Montauk Skate Park renovation to accept funding. In February, the town board had discussion on the potential Montauk Skate Park expansion and how to move forward. We received close to 25 to 30 different phone calls that day and dozens of other emails. The town and the community wanted this. Later that month, the town board accepted engineering proposal for the expansion of the skate park from L.K. McLean. In March, the town board bonded for $250,000 for the expansion of the Montauk Skate Park. That would be in addition to $30,000 that we bonded for the year before, where at that time, it was only going to be a four-foot little wooden half-pipe. And we've transcended from there. The town has continued to work in great coordination with representatives from the Montauk Skate Park Coalition through the design process, and as the Montauk Skate Park went through their fundraising efforts for the park. Matt, do you want to lead this one up here, my friend?
So I'm Matt Jellicoe. I'm an associate with L.K. McLean Associates. I've been here for, actually, this month, it'll be 20 years. We've been around since 1950. The skate park, the original skate park in 1999, we had worked to produce those construction documents. We had worked alongside Andy Tesler as far as getting that design built. So in February, we teamed with Pivot Customs and the American Ramp Company. They're actually worldwide skate park design group, and we teamed with them, submitted a proposal, and got hired by the town to do the engineering for this skate park expansion. In March, we performed a topographic survey, primarily of the skate park portion of the park, because it's part of a much larger parcel. We hired a company to do geotechnical investigation, and at the end of the geotechnical investigation, produce an engineering report that would be used by the skate park design team, you know, which had information, structural engineering information about the soils in the general area. In March, March 14th, we held a public meeting at the skate park where Tito from the Pivot Customs led a group of all sorts of skaters and community members and basically talked about the cool aspects of the current park and what the skaters would like to see in a new park. So after that meeting, Pivot Customs and American Ramp put together a survey, an online survey. There were 191 respondents. The survey asked all sorts of different things, you know, your age, skill level, you know, what you use in the park, if it's a skateboard or, you know, something different, how many days a week you typically use the park, and features that are important to you. So based on that, important features were incorporated into the schematic designs, and Pivot and American Ramp worked with the Coalition to try to come up with the best schematic design possible, incorporating everything that was brought up in the public meeting and on that online survey. So David, I think the next slides go through the results of that, and maybe Nate can talk about, you know, the actual skate park design.
Thank you very much, Matt. Yeah, I'm going to bring in Nate Bemo, who's the president of Pivot Customs and American Ramp Company, to go through the schematics. Nate, whenever you want me to forward to the next slide, please let me know. He's going to talk about a lot of the specifics in skateboarding, which I've learned a lot through this process and also through the Olympics this year, and the elements that will be there and why we think those are important to add to this project. Nate?
All right. So, yeah, obviously, you know, we gathered all the survey results, and, you know, it's always a fun challenge to kind of boil all that down and try to, you know, hit as many things possible, kind of gather the consensus of what everybody is wanting. Sometimes it's an impossible task, because, you know, there's such a variety. However, I, you know, Tito did some different revisions and working with the committee, and, you know, just the feedback is, you know, outstanding. They love the design. It has a good mix. If any of you watched the Olympics, you would notice there's like, there was kind of like a street plaza type section set up for a contest, and then there was a bowl and flow type contest. And so this design really encompasses, you know, all of those types of skateboarding and, you know, bike riding, et cetera, and really just kind of has a really nice blend and, you know, has it all flow together. So anyway, from a, you know, designer's point of view and skater's point of view, you know, it really checks a lot of those boxes. So, yeah, you can, yeah, flip through the slides, and if there's anything you have a question about.
Nate, do you just want to explain this section here? Is this the section with the rails and the street course?
Yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, if you watched the Olympics or, you know, any skate videos, whatever, there's quite a bit of tricks that kind of mimic skating, skating in the downtown, street-type area. So stair sets, they'll actually do tricks down the stair sets and land on the bottom. Also, you know, different, you know, handrails, they'll come up and do tricks down them. And so there's, you know, there's all different types of rails, round, square, wide, and, you know, different types of, different disciplines, even skateboarders themselves. Some might prefer a round, some might prefer a square, some might like a wire ledge, and then bikes also. So in this just kind of screenshot right here, it just shows like the diversity of, you know, all the different types of tricks, all the different types of people this can cater to. There's, you know, a big stair set, there's a smaller stair set, there's a little gap on the right and all these different rails. So anyway, just a all-around just super
This section, this section, the section, a street course, which we don't currently have at the Montauk Skate Park right now, we have more of what's called a flow bowl or another bowl, we call it the Andy Bowl out there. This section opens up to a lot of younger skateboarders also then, too. And it gives us some permanent mountings out there, which we currently don't have right now. I'll just go on to the next one, Nate, if you want to just explain this. This is
Yeah, so this is kind of like the bowl area, the flow area, which you already have some of that, which is, you know, kind of what Montauk is known for, like that type of system. So we definitely didn't want to move away from that. You know, skateboarding has changed the style of skating, however, this is still a very popular thing. So like David said in the previous one, we're kind of bringing that element of street skating, which has really grown since the original park was built. So it's still, you know, kind of stays true to the original intent and nature, and, you know, people have grown up skating that type of park, so that was very important to keep that. And so this is what, you know, this reflects here in this particular, so it's all, you know, it's like, for lack of better terms, like kind of swimming pools, different levels, different heights, and so they can be hit from all different angles, all different skill levels. There, you know, so in the farther part in there, you'll notice it looks like a little shallower, and then it kind of spills into a deeper. So it allows for progression as well. It's a little easier to roll in to that part of it. There's not any coping there, so you can roll in. So anyway, there's all different skill levels, all different heights, and just really unique blends, like you can see here. So anyway, it's something really cool, because a beginner, you know, on day one, who's just learning to roll in, they could roll in on that right side, which is really, really mellow. And then, you know, there's additionally some kind of steeper stuff and different flowy stuff, so an advanced rider can also have fun. They could gap that entire section. So this kind of focuses, yeah, kind of a blend of the street area, plaza-type area, and then you can also see on the left And then you can also see on the left-hand side, you know, kind of a raised quarter pipe area. That's, you know, really unique and flowy as well. So Tito did a really good job just kind of blending the two types of skaters and uses. So here, here's just a cool little art wall there and seating area. So yeah.
So Nate, I want to thank you very much and your team for this. And primarily, you know, there was a lot of outreach from your team to find out what the skaters of the park wanted. You know, this project, yes, now we're looking to see what the town board wants. But the genesis of this was the skaters of the park. They wanted, they wanted more elements for the street side. They wanted a better flow bowl, which is now in the Olympics and is a snake, snake track. Help me out, Nate. Sorry.
Yeah, snake run, yeah.
In which they can use the outside of, of the entire park for it. So the design encapsulated what the users wanted. And, and they told us, which it was great. So it was a great process that, that we moved forward to get to some of these conceptual designs on there right now. What we're looking at is a design, how it would lay out on our current structure. We have a place in there for shade, shade structure. We also see the sledding hill that has been discussed that would take us down to the parks. And this is how it would lay out on the area. So there would be a gradual extension, but pretty much using 85% of what's already there as far as the park or the other pad that used to be a former, former tennis court on there. Nate, you want to put a final, final little emphasis on it for us?
Can I just ask one quick question? Is there, just on this slide, can you just point to the area? I know that when I was there, they were talking about a greater area for the beginners. Can you just point it out on this, on this overview here? It's that front part. Okay, okay.
This right here will act as almost a four-foot half-pipe back and forth. They can go around into the snake run on the outside. If they want to drop in gradually into the flow bowl, which is a little bit more of an intermeter to experience, I'll keep that. This here is the pool, which is intermediate to more of advanced. But when you are in the skateboarding realm, it is one of the best bowls that are still left on the East Coast of America. So we did not want to touch that because that was something that was designed by Andy Kessler, who was of, of, of the prominence of Tony Hawk, if you wanted to say, if we wanted to look at those names. So we now have different, different elements of this for every different ability level and age that might want to take up skateboarding or anything else on, on, on the park there. So it worked within what we had as far as the size. When you saw the Olympics, the Olympics didn't have a budget. Olympics did not have a size constraint. We have both here. And I think what the team did listening was develop the best that we could there. So it's going to be very smooth concrete, which is a different, difference in what we have out there. We have some acid wash concrete right now. And it's just going to smooth and even be safer than what's out there now and much more fun and attractive than to. I hope that answers the question, Jeff.
Yeah. Just want to know which areas I have to avoid if I try to get back on a skateboard. It could happen, could happen.
Nate, thank you very much. I'm going to bring in John Britton and Jasana Britton from the Montauk Skate Park Coalition to go over some next slides.
Thank you, David. I really appreciate that. I want to thank the board for this. This, this project is a public-private partnership in the truest sense. And you see some of these names listed here. We actually have about 30 names in total of people that we are now broadly calling the Montauk Skate Park Coalition. This is a group of citizens that organically have expressed interest in volunteering time, effort, and money to help organize what has turned into be a very popular renovation project in Montauk. And really something, an opportunity to broaden the use of this park to a much broader subset of the community involving, as David said, a lot of beginners, girls, people who are older, who've given up this type of sport. This is a project that is designed to be a much more user-friendly facility, reaching out and being able to be used by a broader cross-section of the community. And I just want to say in particular, how much, note how much progress we have made on the private side and then over the course of the past year, starting with just a handful of people. As David mentioned, this process has been in motion since 2011 as a concept, but really was moribund. And we started revitalizing that at the end of 2020. And over the course of this year, we have achieved a number of milestones that really have brought this now to the cusp of starting the construction phase and really making this a reality. And I couldn't be more pleased with the progress we've made to date. And, but I want to thank the board again for your partnership and helping us initiate that process. So some of the highlights of where we are today, the Montauk Skate Park Coalition really is a, and now in a very good position because we've actually formally filed nonprofit status for that. So we're going to have an organizational structure that will go on beyond the construction phase. That will allow us to support programming, other amenities in the park. We've also filed for 501(c)(3) status, so we can also continue to fundraise on a tax-advantaged basis for donors who want to support this vision. Over the course of this year, we held a number of events to fundraise for this park. We had incredible response. We've had over 330 individual donors. We had three different art auctions. We sold over 110 different donated art pieces. We raised $200,000 through small ticket donations, through GoFundMe, through merchandise sales, through art auctions. We sold a customized truck that brought in nearly $20,000. We've had just an incredible response in terms of the, the breadth of participation. It really, to us, validated the desire on the part of the entire community for this sort of thing. And that is actually now at the, we held our final event at the Surf Lodge over Labor Day weekend. We're very grateful for their support and allowing us to do that at that popular time. That brought in an additional $32,000. And this is the first time that we can say publicly that we have actually successfully achieved a $1.3 million fundraising goal. And that's a very important milestone because the conceptual plans that, that American Ramp and Pivot Custom came up with are estimated to cost $1.3 million. So over the course of the last nine months, maybe 10 months, we have successfully raised a million dollars, over a million dollars in private funding to complement the town's $280,000 that the town will be providing to this. So we have done something that even our most optimistic members of the Montauk Skate Park Coalition thought might have been a stretch a few months ago. But we have gotten to the level that can realize this dream. We can go out to bid now with the monies that we have in hand. And most importantly, from my standpoint, we also have this additional structure, a nonprofit structure that will essentially provide the support and the oversight and the, the care for this facility even after the construction phase has happened. So we're in great shape. I think a lot of what now has to happen as we turn that money over to the town and we proceed into the construction phase, the selection of a contractor, and then get this actual concrete poured and this dream realized. We still need help from the town. We, we do not, we did not fundraise for some of the other things that are not the skateable surface. That includes the shade structures, the seating, and the hill clearing primarily. So we're hopeful that the town realizes that this could be a tremendous opportunity for the entire East End and a really transformative thing for the community of Montauk and will help provide the funds for that to really crystallize this whole vision. One thing I will say, just as an anecdote, I can't tell you how many people came up to me over the course of this fundraising for the project and said, hey, you know, I didn't even know that Montauk had a skate park. Where is it? And I said, well, do you know the ball fields? Are you familiar with the ball fields by the brewery? They said, of course, yeah. But they're, they don't see it because they can't see up that little hill through the scrub forest. They're not aware that it's up on Essex Street. Part of the really exciting vision of this would be to integrate these two facilities. This would be a tremendous, it's, it's an easy solution. You take down those scrub trees for not very much money. I think it's $25,000. And you would have this transformed area. You can have seating up on that western edge of the park that would look down onto the ball fields and also into the skate park. You'd even have a water view. This could be a dramatically improved community resource overall for the town. And the skate park itself is funded. We just hope that the town agrees that the entirety of the vision for this recreational resource could be improved with a little extra help. So thank you all very much.
John, I want to thank you and Jasana pretty much for helping lead the charge for the Montauk Skate Park Coalition. And it's been wonderful to ride your coattails on this project. I know Peter, you know, I've heard from many people when Kath and I were at one of the events, people are just coming up and are very, very excited for it. So where we're at now is there's a, as we initially presented in February right now, some other options we might have in the, in the park area for sledding hill. This was discussed in the Montauk CAC already. We're supportive. And also for a shade pavilion also. I have taken this to the planning board for recommendations on there. One of the main things they want to see is potential sidewalk connectivity along Essex to the downtown area also then too. I've also discussed this with Natural Resources. They've developed a memo about what species of trees to keep potentially on that sledding hill. They're also going to be developing a revegetation plan that we can work on, on Essex to give, to give the area a little bit more of screening from the streets going by. What John was stating, these are some of the areas. There's actually connectivity already through the stairway, stairwells down to, down to the bathrooms down in this area. But in, in the years past, there's been, there's been activities that we wouldn't want as a town happening within these trees in this tree-lined area. So there are some calip or cedars, sorry, cherry trees potentially keep, but to remove it would give it then a winter time approach. And also, as John was saying, a complete connectivity to the ball fields, which is nice. I like sitting up here on the hill to watch my kids play softball. It gives a little bit of a better view for me personally. And a shade pavilion. This is just an example of one then too. So next steps. What I'm looking for right now is for thoughts, concerns from the town boards and, and to get your final support. So for the final design, so we can move forward, that we can complete the final construction documents for the skate park. Nate and his team will be finishing that, working with Matt. We then will have to send our plans to SHPO, New York State, State Historical Preservation Office, which also deals with recreation. We'll do that through Tom Desk, who's the Montauk State Park Representative, for their review and approval. We've already alerted Tom to that they're going to be upcoming and get the exact information that they will need for their review. We'll completely finalize the budget and funding, for, sorry, and funding, fundraising. What that then happens is that that will lead us to be able to develop the RFP, which Matt will be working with our purchasing department and finalizing. Questions I have is determining if the skate park would, you know, like some of the approvals for other elements that would be outside or potentially we would put into the RFP with some additional funding for the sledding hill and shade pavilion. We would complete the secret for the project. Again, a design and release of the RFP for the construction of the skate park expansion, other elements we would like to have by late fall. We would then get that back. We would select a qualified construction company for the expansion. And then we would get a shovel in the ground. Now a shovel in the ground based on weather and also making sure we have the most appropriate construction builder for this, we would hope could be done in late spring. We might be constructing into the summertime, but in discussions with the skate park community, they are A-OK with that, knowing what's to come. So that is our presentation. Again, this is the transformative view of the Montauk Skate Park and some of our recreational facilities for Montauk. Again, it has been something that is very unique to me in the town board in which there's been just hundreds of individuals that have gone behind this, not just with their concern, support financially also. It's, it's just been a fun project. And again, John, Jasana, and the other coalitions, it's been nice to ride your coattails on this project. And I know Peter and others on the board are, share the same sentiment. So.
Yeah, David, I, I want to thank you because, you know, we started getting emails from the public, you know, when COVID hit and there was limited activity for people to do. And, you know, we really saw an uptick in, in interest in the skate park and use of the skate park. And I, I think it's just been really overwhelmingly successful what's happened here. This partnership of private citizens together with the town to get us to this stage. I'm really excited about the project, fully in support. You guys have done such an amazing job. I'm just, I can't tell you how thrilled I am and proud of our, of our community and the folks in Montauk who pushed this forward. Really amazing effort. And, you know, I think the assets, you know, brought to bear for a community project like this and, and the way everybody came together is really a model for how we can, you know, work together as a community to get really good and positive things done. So I just want to thank you all. You have my full support moving forward. I'm really excited about things getting going. And, and thanks, David, for the heavy lifting on the board side. Really appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So if I could just say, I'm in full support and I think that the town, you know, considering the commitment from the community, I would be in support of the town funding the shade structure and the seating. And, you know, I like the idea of the connectivity to the ball fields and the planning board suggestion to connect a sidewalk to downtown. I would ask, calling it a sledding hill, I know that's the purpose for it. I would ask our insurance carrier to just make sure we can call it that. You know, I, I see the, the need to clear it. It'd be great to have sidelines to the water and to the ball field. But, and that if it got used as a sledding hill, that's great. But I don't know if, you know, we, we need to call it that, just my two cents.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I just want to say I'm in support and thank you, David, for bringing this to the town board. We had so many emails from Montauk, from kids to parents to grandparents that said, you know, this is something that's necessary. It's used. And, you know, that, that was the other thing. It's really a year-round place for people to gather. And that was something else that I thought was very compelling and, and happy to be supportive of this project.
I like it too. I'm, I think it's great for the community. I would love to see a memo from the planning department, just a general memo sort of going over the whole plan because it's pretty extensive. You know, just to get some commentary from them. But I think it's, it's a great, it's a great, it's going to be a great asset to the community. And it may even get me on a skateboard again, which would be a sight to see. But I think just sort of a general comment and narrative would be great from the planning department. So we get their kind of point of view.
I have something for that and I can get that over to the board. No problem. Well, board members, I, I thank, I thank you very much. I thank you for giving us the opportunity as far as a coalition, you know, to add more youth recreation to the town. I will take your comments back with the coalition on our exit meeting with Nate, Matt, Jasana, and John and the rest of the committee. We'll move this forward and we'll look forward to continue the hard work and, and, you know, getting this done for Montauk and the kids and the adults.
Yeah, I was going to say.
All good. Everyone, thank you so very much for your support and we look forward to seeing you again shortly.
Yeah, thank you. Good job.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Bye-bye. So next up, we have a discussion of Southern Pine Beetle update. We have our land management director, Scott Wilson, I believe, in the wings there, Jason?
Yes, Scott is being let in. And we also have one person in the, in the waiting room called Andy Mann, and I do not know who that is.
Andy is probably one of the two Andys that work in that department. So I'm thinking Andy Drake, probably.
All right. We shall see soon.
And it's not. It's the other Andy and he's sideways. Hey.
Andy Gates, okay.
Welcome, Scott.
Can we mute our TV in the background, one of you? Sorry about that.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Andy.
All good. Do you want to try to do me a favor? Andy, could you, there you go, right on.
Yeah. All right. Scott, take it away.
Actually, Andy is going to present on this Southern Pine Beetle update.
Yeah. So I mean, as the board's well aware, and many people in the community are aware, southern pine beetles started attacking our forests, I believe, back in 2018. And since that time, we've lost thousands of trees. The town underwent a, an effort to help suppress and slow the spread of this infection. This is a species that is not native to Long Island, but with warmer climate and not a long period below freezing in the wintertime, they've taken hold. And they have particularly chosen the southern pitch pine, the pitch pine, which is very susceptible to this. So with that being said, Andy, you want to give us an update on what the status is and your effort? and your efforts to help slow the spread of the pest?
Yes, as, as you said, you know, the, the town actually made a significant effort to start suppressing the southern pine beetles. It was late 2017 and we actually had a state of emergency put in place at that time. We have continued to do inspections since then. And we actually inspected the East Hampton Airport yesterday with assistance from the New York State DEC staff. And the airport was one of the few town lands that we had not yet found significant infested. Unfortunately, yesterday we marked over 500 trees there. And there was more land to be inspected. We'd been hopeful that the numbers would be small enough that we'd be able to manage by cutting and perhaps even have New York State Department of Environmental Conservation help us with cutting. But the reality is that DEC is limited with staff and they cannot commit sawyers to East Hampton at this time. Our small department cannot cut these trees in a timely manner as the beetles are currently reproducing and spreading to trees over and over again.
Andy, can I ask you where on the airport that you inspected where you found these 500 trees?
Yeah, this would be mostly close to Industrial Road, near the hangar area and north and south of Industrial Road. There's some lots on the south side too. It's the, it's the most dense area of pine trees on the airport. Some other areas are not as dense, so they have not yet been infected, infested. We are still providing the service of inspections for private property owners at their request. And if we mark infested trees, actively infested trees on private properties, we can also provide a dump fee waiver for the material if they're going to have it removed, cut their cost. So far this year, we've inspected 57 private properties and we've marked over 2,000 trees on private property. Inspection requests are still coming in and with a lot more trees dying, they're coming in more quickly. Of those 2,000 that we marked, 1,500 of them were in the last month. So we expect that we'll continue to see a lot more, we'll continue to receive more inspection requests. So unfortunately, there are also properties that trees have gone unmanaged. And it appears that this beetle is here to stay. So it, it's really just a management effort as we can do it at this point. I'm happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
So Andy, you, you know, I think we all realize that we're not going to eradicate the beetle and I'm not sure we ever thought we would. The goal had been to, you know, restrict the spread. Scott, you're raising your hand, did you want to?
I'm sorry, I was, I was raising my hand because I naively thought when we did the state of emergency that we were going to be lucky enough to, to eradicate. I thought the winter would be cold enough that we got enough trees down that the numbers of beetle would be so small that they weren't, wouldn't be able to continue to pursue their ever growing hunger. But that was a naive thought.
As I said earlier, you know, our winters have been mild to the point where ice skating is not an activity that people regularly pursue here anymore. In fact, I don't think we really had more than a day or two of ice skating possible last, all last winter. And, you know, that's very conducive to this population continuing and increasing. But in terms of management, Andy, you know, I know the department is still going and marking private property for trees that are infected. And the recommendation is that homeowners fell the trees and there is a waiver of the dump fees if they want to dispose of the material. At this time, that's been extended. So can you talk a little bit about how cutting suppresses and, and why that's important to do?
Yes, so when, when actively infested trees are, are cut down, it, it can actually break up the pheromone plume in the trees in that area. And it can actually disorient the beetles that are in the trees so that they won't, are, are less likely to find the next adjacent trees to, to bore into. So that, that has been an effective method of suppression. Of course, removing the material is an extra step that can be taken, which can add to the cost. But if, if the material is removed from an area, it will also, you know, get those beetles out of that area. We, we obviously have had spots all over town from Northwest Woods all the way down to Wayne Scott. So there are areas that are not completely managed and, you know, there, there are beetles around, so they're still going to show up, they're going to pop up. And that's why we've kind of been looking at some of our town properties. And there are certain areas where there are so many that, or so many small spots that come together that it's difficult to really make a plan to, to suppress them all.
So do you have a recommendation for homeowners if they know? And, and what would the, how long do the trees stay standing if they, you know, if you start to see that they're dying?
So as far as the timing, right now they're, they're most active. So if we're, if we're marking trees now, when we give them a dump fee waiver, we put a one month expiration on it because we want them to act immediately if they're going to try to remove the material and, and get those, those trees down. If it's in the colder months of the year, there, there may be more time to wait, but sooner is better than later. And as far as your first part of the question was recommendations, we're trying to be honest with homeowners and tell them what we know of their area. If we find a very small infestation on a property of, you know, 10, 15 trees and we know of no other infestation nearby, you know, we'll tell them that, that makes a lot of sense to really try to get those down and you may save the, the healthy trees all around. Sometimes a person may be up against a town preserve or another property that's already been infested with hundreds or thousands of trees. And we're just trying to let them know honestly, you know, well, if you take these trees out, there's still some right nearby, you know.
Okay, but these trees are going to die that are not taken down.
Every tree that, that we mark as actively infested, every pitch pine tree will die. I'll just make a note that we do find white pines infested on occasion, but they, they seem to have a good chance of living through the infestation. So we, we don't actually recommend that people take those down.
Okay. Once they die, I mean, and, and I'm asking this because there's a whole group of dead trees on 27 near the Honest Diner. I am concerned that when those die and there's a storm that takes them out, it's going to be right across 27. And, and that, so I, I don't know who owns that property. I did not research it, so I'm asking you guys if, you know, what, what do we do when we see something that might, you know, these are dead trees that are impact safety issues?
That's, that's exactly my concern too. So when I was driving out towards the airport, you know, last week, Northwest Road, seems like a lot of them are in the right of way. I, I know, I think the department's worked with the state and for removal. But Andy, if you could just, you know, go into that a little bit more, please, about public safety and the right of ways?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it depends on the roadway, it depends on the property boundaries. Obviously, we've all looked at maps and every single one of them is a different situation. There are sometimes reserve areas that we can't even determine an owner to, to contact. You know, that, that actually happens all the time. People will contact us and say, I've got a tree that fell on my fence. And, you know, if we have a way to give them information about the ownership, we can, or if it's town property, we'll help them take care of it. But sometimes we can't even contact an owner. And as far as road right of ways, it would be up to the individual government, you know, whether it's a state DOT or if it's town or county.
We've had a good relationship with our highway department. They've been keeping us informed and we've been keeping them informed for trees that look particularly hazardous or maybe leaning towards roadways. And, and they've been being pretty good, at least cutting that front row back.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering about.
Go ahead, Seth.
Well, I know we did this in 20, late 2017, but it probably would behoove us to do it again, to put a posting on the website that shows what folks should look, look for, that, that their tree could be infested so that they, you know, they know what they should be, you know, as I said, looking for. The other thing that might be helpful, Andy, is if you folks are working with Barnaby could create a map so folks could see what are the, the area, at least now, that has been affected? You know, how far, you know, south does it go, you know, in the town? How far, you know, east and west? So that, you know, because at first this was all, we looked at it, it was, you know, Northwest Woods and then it started creeping into Wayne Scott. Now we're, you know, south of Industrial Road. I think that, so community members would also be alerted, like, I, I fall into this area where, you know, southern pine beetles have been, have been found so that maybe I need to go take a walk around my property and here's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, that, that's a good idea. And we, we did make a, a map with, a couple of years ago with all of that information on it. So I don't know if it was a couple of years ago, but we, we could certainly add to that with the data that we've been keeping. Each private property, we, we have a list, we keep track of what we've marked there. So we can, we could put that all on a map and get that updated and put it on the web.
So Andy, it's my understanding that infected trees that aren't felled in a timely way, if they're allowed to remain and to the point where the beetles emerge, that there really is an exponential effect, number of trees potentially infected. If you have a couple of trees that go untreated, you know, that those two trees could be, come 10 or 20 trees then infected after the beetles emerge. And that it really is somewhat explosive. And so you're, you're recommending that people who are aware of infected trees should make every effort to remove them before the beetles emerge. Is that correct?
Townwide, that, that's what you stated is correct. Fortunately, you know, we as the town are landowners of specific lands, which are broken up by all individual private property owners, county lands, TNC lands, everything else. So we give the information to the owners and, you know, unless, when we had our state of emergency, it was a little bit more coordinated because we were able to hire companies to do that across multiple private property. But obviously it's up to individual owners what they're going to do on their properties.
Can you explain? I'm sorry, can, can you just explain what emerged means? I mean, is there a certain period of time that a pine beetle stays within, you know, a tree and then moves on?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, they're breeding and feeding in the trees and then they emerge. They, they leave those trees and go to the, the next nearest standing pitch pine trees. And then the, the trees are left to die. So you'll see, by the time you're seeing brown needles on the trees, most of those beetles have already left those trees and they're onto the ones that still have green needles.
Do we know how far they can, you know, so what the, the next closest? Is that 100 feet, a quarter of a mile? I mean, is there any signs there?
It depends on how many beetles there are. If there's, if there's fewer beetles or fewer infested trees, then they're less likely to spread as far. Like Peter said, it is an exponential problem, which is why it can really blow up. If there's 10 trees, it could become 100 trees within weeks during the height of the season. But when we mark trees for recommended removal, we also mark buffer trees, which would be anything where the branches are maybe 20 feet away from the next tree. You know, in the field, you decide based on where, how close the trees are. But we, we do recommend cutting buffer trees so that that helps to, if they do emerge, you, you've kind of got a buffer.
If you imagine this as like a slow burning fire, you know, of infection, slow burning fire, you, you're basically creating a fire break by cutting infected and buffer trees. You're isolating the rest of the untouched trees from that infection.
Andy, but I wanted to ask you something by way of adding a little bit nuance to this comment by Peter about, you know, recommending cutting the trees. I believe I heard you say that it's situational, that the location of the property and the condition of the environs of that property make a big difference. And what you said before, if I understood you correctly, was that if you're in a location, for example, between two areas of infestation, cutting is not going to stop, it's not going to stop this, this infestation because there's, there's, it's gotten too far along and they're going to come back.
Right, you know, it's a kind of like, Peter mentioned the, the wildfire as a, an analogy. And I think that's a really good analogy because if you can get all of the wildfire out from the center, then you, you may potentially stop it. But if it has embers that have gone onto both sides and you get that center portion out, those embers are going to light up on the sides and, and burn back towards the middle again. So the wildfire analogy is actually pretty good. And as, as Kathy's recommending, if we have a map, you might actually, we all might get a better sense of, of where this is going on, which is really spread across the town a lot in the last few years.
And, and isn't it also correct that the, the DEC itself some time ago, maybe as long ago as October of 2018, recognized that we had been, they and we had been unable to get the critical mass that we would have needed to actually stop this. And they, I believe, gave up on it. They acknowledged that they were not going to defeat these beetles. And I think that was as long ago as I think August of 2018, isn't that correct?
I don't know if it was that long ago, but they did make some kind of statement and, and they pulled some of the resources to back upstate to other projects because this spread has really gotten pretty bad.
Just one more, Peter, can I just have one more question? So is it possible that white pines might be our salvation here? If they're, you know, if some of them are surviving, maybe that's a species. You know, I know in my neighborhood, part of it is white pines and part of it is black pines. It, it would seem like it would be worth a shot to plant white pines because that sounds like they have a better chance of surviving. And maybe that genetic switch will, you know, transfer to other white pines, which would be, I think, a, a happy way to mitigate what's going on. And actually a little bit more constructive, frankly.
Yes, when people ask us for replanting recommendations, we are recommending white pines. And like I said, if, even if we find infested white pines, we don't recommend cutting them because there has not been a lot of evidence that shows that the beetles can successfully reproduce and exit those pines. And most of the white pines seem to live through the infestation. So I agree with you that, that, that is probably a plant that would be good to replant with. And that's, in these areas where we're losing a lot of the pitch pines, if there are white pines, that's probably what's going to take hold over time.
That's a, that at least is encouraging. I mean, it's not.
Has there been a recommendation to landscape companies about pitch, of not selling pitch pines? And making sure that it's white pines that are sold or, I, I know black pines have a problem too, so.
I don't know if there's been a specific recommendation. I don't know if there's been a specific recommendation from anybody for that. But I think that since white pines are prettier in general, I I think they're probably sold more often than pitch pines anyway.
I'm wondering if natural resources could help make an inroad even in that. But my other question was about, you know, I'm the recommendation is maybe to let it let it go, which I think Jeff was alluding to, but you still have a whole stand of dead trees. And those dead trees, to me, create a problem and a safety issue, not only for the homeowner that might have them on his property, but people that are on trails, people that, and then during storms, if you have quite a few coming down, that that's that's another whole set of circumstances. You know, do you just tell people to take down those trees that these are hazards now? They've got dead trees on their property.
Well, again, every individual will have to make their own decision. So we, you know, we will recommend, sometimes if a person has trees that are close to their house and they have a large property with additional trees deeper into the woods, you know, we'll we'll give them the waiver, explain, you know, you got this many trees. And if they have concerns about taking them all down or monetary concerns, you know, we'll say, well, you know, I mean, obviously you need to look at what is the most hazardous. So the things around the house, you're probably going to want to take down because these trees are going to die and become hazards to driveway or pool your house. Surely, some some people will leave the ones that are deeper into the woods.
Yeah.
I I just would add on that note that I've spoken to some of my neighbors and that's exactly the strategy they're adopting. They're not cutting trees anymore to prevent infestation. They're cutting a few trees here and there where they think it could hit the house or cause a problem.
That's actually not my recollection from speaking with the neighbors. The the neighbors have been actively removing any tree that's infected all around our neighborhood.
Well, maybe we've talked to different neighbors.
Well, the ones that are immediate.
I've talked to immediate neighbors that are following that practice.
That's interesting. I'd like to know who they are. I'd like to speak to them.
You you guys can do that offline. But but I do think there's a safety hazard in keeping trees that are dead up to others. So I mean, that is, that's anyway, just, and I've said it three times here, so.
We've got hundreds of those trees, if not thousands of those trees on town properties on Swamp Road. Just drive up and down and you will see thousands of standing trees that are dead.
There are, yeah, there are thousands of dead standing trees all around because of this. And, you know, we've, at least on our trails, we we try to do a good job keeping up with them on our trails. You know, if there's ones that are obvious hazards, immediate hazards, we'll try to get them down. As trees fall, we get them out of the way. We have, Andy, do we have a chance in time if everyone, homeowners, towns, county, we all proceeded as one action a couple of years back to try to encapsulate this this, you know, the beetle until we wouldn't be forcing so many of our properties? Was there a time when everyone got together and did it as one? Well, that was the effort of twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, they're under the state of emergency. That was the hope. You know, we, our department had originally marked about eight hundred trees in one area up in northwest on the Curtis property. That's where we found it. And, you know, in a matter of weeks, it was twenty five hundred trees and then we kept finding spots. And, you know, that that was the hope. And I I feel like we were able to slow it down. We maybe knocked it back some for a couple of years, but then by twenty twenty, it really exploded again. And it's not just here. It's in Southampton Town and in the Central Pine Barrens area.
It was not a well-understood problem at that time because we didn't have, or, you know, our northeast area didn't have a prevalent presence of these types of beetles. And so even when we talked to arborists and other landscape companies, you know, they kept confusing it with black turpentine beetle instead of the southern pine beetle. And so there was a lack of understanding on how fast these little critters would reproduce and then attack other trees. And so even when we were trying to explain it and even during the state of emergency and and I wasn't kidding, I guess I was naive. I really thought we were able to, we would be able to beat this problem. But there were a number of trees that we were, we had marked and there were a number of even even county lands where they didn't have the capability or manpower to actually go in and get those trees down. And there were any number of private residences who, we had marked trees that that didn't cut the beetles too. So you're right, if we were all rowing in the same direction, it may have been possible, but we were not all rowing in the same direction.
Andy, if we go back where we started, where we talked about inspecting the airport and finding five hundred trees, do we, are we looking to take those fell those trees? And do we have someone on contract that can do that so that it can be done expeditiously?
Well, that may be hit discussion for you as a board after this. Like I said, we don't have anyone set up to do that right now. I'm not sure if it's worthwhile. Like I said, we had, we we went out there and we included the York State DEC staff in hopes that we would find a number more like a hundred trees or less in in hopes that we could draw on them to help us and our department just get out there and spend a week or two and get those trees down. But it was so many more than we had had hoped. And like I said, there was even more land to cover. And we really, we really actually wanted to be able to say, you know, come to this meeting today and tell you that we had inspected it, so we had some sense of where it was. Because that was, as I said before, really the last large pitch pine dominant area that we knew of that didn't have any significant infestation.
I mean, the bottom, the bottom line is if there's infection in a stand of trees, if you get to it quickly, you cut them, you suppress it. It may come back at some point, might be another season or two before it comes back. But if you're continually proactive about it, that you really slow it down, that that's what I've noticed. And if you don't, then it just goes, continues to go to the next tree, the next tree, the next tree. The whole, the whole stand ends up going. So, you know, by doing some proactive cutting early and often enough that you actually slow it down so it's not happening all at once and you don't have all those other issues to deal with.
Yeah, I know, and that's, and that's my point. I'm just, you know, I don't know, do we have to go out for for bid? Or is, we don't want to wait for that, I would imagine.
Sounds like the airport is all, that that piece of property is already beyond what could be reasonably controlled is what I'm hearing from Andy.
Oh, so I just worry about the the neighbors, you know, to this, you know, there's a residential neighborhood just to the south of Industrial Road. You would hate.
Yeah, I mean, I already know it's in there too. We're we're getting calls for inspection. There, we already know, south of Industrial Road, the infestation that's on the town parcel on the south side of Industrial came from south of the tracks. You know, the dead trees are across the tracks there. You know, there are other private areas, private property areas there that had it before. So it's it's already making its way from there.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's easy.
So it's out of control is what you're saying.
It's easy to track the pathway by the string of dead trees.
Exactly.
So you're saying it's out of control already there, basically. It's beyond control.
You know, that's that's kind of what I'm saying without saying it because at any point, if you wanted to spend the money and and hire the crews, it could be done.
For private property owners, though, for private property owners, if they, you know, if they have a stand of trees and they're noticing an infection early enough by cutting, that would, that would either slow or stop the the spread, correct?
Yes, especially if if the, if based in private property owners are grouped, you know, which and and we have that in other places in the town too, where people try to get in coordination with their neighbors. Obviously, as you know, it it can be difficult with multiple owners.
Yeah, I mean, if you get one owner who's not gonna, you know, cut trees, then the the infection's going to continue to spread at a much rapid, more rapid rate.
But again, to make this clear, it's situational and and the geographic location of other outbreaks nearby would change that. Because I think what you said before and repeated before is that if, for example, you're in between two areas of intensive infection, infestation, it's not going to help. They're going.
Unless there are no trees in.
Excuse me, I asked Andy, Peter.
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't say Andy. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I'm I'm not looking to you as the expert on pine beetles. I'm looking to Andy. That's, and I've talked to Andy about this. He's, he's been at my house. We've talked about it. And what I've understood and understood you to say today is that a location of a property will make a big difference about whether cutting trees is useful or not. If it's in between two areas that are, you said it's comparable to being a forest fire. If you're in between two areas where there's massive infestation, you're not going to stop it.
Are there any other questions for?
That was it. That was a question.
I think you already stated that.
Okay.
I I don't, you know, that's we're going over ground. Again, if it's contiguous, if there's no interruption, if there's contiguous forests, then yeah, it's a problem. But, you know, if there's not any forest in between, then it's not likely to have an impact.
That's your opinion. I've I've actually talked, I've actually talked to Andy.
I mean, if you don't have, you don't have.
I've actually talked to Andy about my own personal situation.
So if you have multiple properties with no trees, it's unlikely that whatever standard trees in the middle between those already devastated areas are likely to become in in that situation that Jeff is describing. Yon, yon help.
You know, I it's hard for me. I, you know, I can't really predict where the beetles are going to come from, how far they're travel. But I'll just state again that there are a lot of areas, a lot of spots spread around the town at this point. And, you know, perhaps the map that Kathy suggested will help. We can all look at it together.
Any other questions or comments for Andy or Scott?
No, thank you for the sobering update.
Yeah, gentlemen, at this point, we'll move on to liaison reports. Kathy, do you have a liaison report for us?
I do. I just wanted to give an update on the Springs Fireplace Road reconstruction project. The county is still putting in aprons on for the driveways of the adjacent residents. We have received a few complaints that the newly constructed road is choppy. We've made the county aware of this, but in speaking to Steve Lynch, the county has inspectors on site each day and they're signing off on the work. And he believes the choppiness is a function of the pavement that's underneath the new asphalt. I mentioned last week that we had had a meeting with the Spring School District. I spoke to Deb Winters again at the end of last week. And the district has a few traffic safety concerns, including the speeding on Old Stone Highway near the new school entrance. And Steve has extended the twenty mile per hour school zone to cover the new entrance, which is allowable by by law. And he will be painting twenty miles per hour on Old Stone Highway, you know, in both directions. So that is going to be on the pavement. And he's also going to be painting crosswalks on School Street, so the kids have designated areas where they'll cross. Last week, the YMCA Board of Managers met. We learned that philanthropy is up, the membership is coming back. They had a very successful summer camp season. They are struggling like most, you know, municipalities and others across Long Island with a shortage of lifeguards. But they're going to be working with our local organizations, including Ocean Rescue, to see if we can get some folks to, you know, lifeguard for a couple of hours a couple of times a week. We also discussed how the town had hired McLean, L K McLean, for the capital projects, the new roof, the solar installation, which would go into the grid and the new air conditioning units. We will have, I mentioned last week, just to remind folks, we're going to have a presentation next Tuesday, the twenty first for the results of the wireless communications survey that we took. We should have that presentation on the town's website by the by the end of the week. And then on a final note, I wanted to share that this past Saturday, as our country marked the sobering twentieth twentieth anniversary of nine eleven, I was humbled to attend our community ceremony in remembrance of that fateful day. And as I stood in the crowd, you know, viewing all of our, many of our first responders and their families and listening to the fireman's prayer, I was strengthened and moved by our town's resolve to never forget, yet to still have the compassion and resolve, as the prayer says, when I'm called to duty, God, wherever flames may rage, give me strength to save a life, whatever be its age. Help me to embrace a little child before it's too late or save an older person from the horror of that fate. Sorry, it's, it was quite an emotional ceremony and just, you know, reflecting back on it. But it's that sentiment that gives me the greatest pride of being a member of this beautiful community. Thank you.
Thank you for that sentiment, Kathy. And, you know, that's a ceremony that I always attend and regret this year not being able to attend dealing with the care of elderly parent out of town. And but it is a very moving and emotional day, and it's a day that should be held in reverence and we should never forget. Thank you. David, do you have a liaison report for us?
I do. Just to carry on a little bit about what Kathy was saying about lifeguards, the YMCA will let everyone know that this this upcoming weekend will be the last weekend of guarded lifeguard of beaches at the town's Ocean Beaches. Following that, the beach bathrooms will close approximately by the end of end of this month also. Last week, a nature preserve committee met. There was discussion about adding, looking at new potential properties that would qualify and be interesting for nature to be deemed as nature preserve properties. We also had a very nice discussion where we had Bruce Horwath come and discuss the benefits or different types of frag-muddy removal protocols. Discussed about, you know, mechanical removals, cuttings, pros and cons, and different techniques that might be out there that that the committee maybe wasn't as aware of. So it was a great discussion back and forth and that the committee can potentially use that information in management plans that might be upcoming in the future then too. So I want to thank Bruce for his time for coming in.
So David, before you move on, I just want to, because you mentioned nature preserve committee, and I know you probably would want to mention it. But Celine Keating, who's been a member a long time with the nature preserve committee, has submitted her resignation. She's moving out of town with her husband. And I just want to take the opportunity to thank Celine for her years dedication and and membership on the committee. Her involvement has helped protect our quality of life and and our environment. And we appreciate her efforts and wish her the best in her new life across across the sound.
Yeah, she will be truly missed. She was a very calming voice of wisdom from Montauk then too, sure. It was it was great to get to know her on that committee, and that's why I love all these committees that we have and we continue to form. We also discussed in the nature preserve committee, the end of the last last Point Preserve, there was some resurfacing of that area that was done recently that was met with some complaints. So we're working through that with the highway department then too and just make sure there's coordination, coordinated efforts about the management plan that'd be in that area. I wanted to also let everyone know that James Farrell, who is one of the town's Eagle Scouts, has completed his project and of of Akias that he'll be installing shortly. So I want to let you know that that's the upcoming. And I've gotten some pictures and it looks very appropriate, very well done and sturdy. And I want to thank land management for also assisting with their locating, location of that. Also on land management, the multi-user trail, Buckskill Meadow, is, that's going to be, we've had some delays on that, so that's going to be upcoming installed in the next couple of weeks then too. Also, I'm working with Buildings and Grounds, and I want to, I want to thank Peter for your input on this also. One of the things that we were able to accomplish with Peter's input at Town Hall was the expansion of the Town Hall parking that we had here, taking some areas that were underused, not accessible, and resurfacing and expand the parking. What we're looking to do is to actually add an ADA compliant sidewalk now from the Town Hall, from here, from the clerk's office over to three hundred panico, so individuals don't have to either walk into. over to 300 Panico. So individuals don't have to either walk into traffic or just to walk against onto the grass. So that's a project that Buildings and Grounds is working on with input of Peter. And we're going to be moving forward on that very, very shortly to assist everyone. It's a, I think we watch at a Town Hall all day long, people watching walking across the grass. And I think it, uh, and, uh, it it'd be beneficial for us to have a a nice, um, a nice, hard ADA compliant uh, sidewalk out there to 300 Panico for our staff and residents. Um, Peter, you might mention this later, but there is a vaccine clinic today in Montauk. You want to bring that information up? Sounds good. Um, lastly, in land management, um, we did receive the DEC permit for 81 Ocean Avenue. That would be for, uh, a restoration effort that's in the village of East Hampton that we co-manage with the Village of East Hampton. Um, and now that we have that, we'll be preparing, um, uh, we're preparing a restoration, uh, restoration, uh, design and also an RFP for that to have, uh, to get that moving along. Uh, lastly, uh, as far as our fisheries, again, I mentioned this in the past, the New York scallop seasons for 2019 and 2020 were declared fishery disaster declarations by NOAA and the U S Secretary of Commerce. Uh, anyone, uh, anyone needs more information on that or might actually need a claim for that? Because specifically, there hasn't been money allocated yet. Let's please continue to contact, uh, learn about the contact the NOAA's website for the fishery disaster assistance, or could also contact my office if you need assistance for that for the conic bay estuary, uh, scalp disaster declarations. Lastly, uh, to go Kathy, as a father of children that go to Springs, I want to thank you and Steve for taking that on. Uh, sometimes, you know, a sidewalk and paint means a lot. I think I think the school and of Springs going through their $23 million expansion is transformative. We want to thank Deb, the school board and the parents and the kids for patience. You know, trying to get 600 kids in and out of school right now and a new and a new, uh, design is not easy. Every single time gets better. Sometimes I go there earlier or later depending on who wants to sleep in or not. But I want to say is thank you for doing that. And lastly, putting a touch on it, schools in session, let's all drive safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Sylvia?
Um, sure. The Community Housing Opportunity Fund met last week and the participants, um, included a lot of business committee, uh, members there were attending to, um, talk about, uh, seasonal housing. They formed a subcommittee, uh, to look into some something that we had talked about in the past called, uh, that would be a pilot program, uh, legislation that would allow RV type vehicles on certain commercial properties to house, um, seasonal employees. They're going to come back to us, um, with ideas, recommendations, details. You know, it's always going to be with what are the details of of something like this? Uh, we also are, um, anxious to move forward with, uh, 395 Panico and ask the planning department. Eric Shance was on the call with us. Um, as we consider a public comment, we are asking, uh, the planning department to consider public comments that, uh, were held when we held the, uh, public hearing for the affordable housing overlay. And I'd like to schedule a work session to consider different possible layouts, uh, for the affordable housing overlay coming up soon. Um, so we can place the seven acres in an area that will, um, um, you know, where the affordable housing will take place, but we'll also help, you know, uh, listen to the neighbors and make sure that we do it in a way that that, um, they have an input into it as well. So I'm going to be scheduling that for an upcoming work session with the planning department. Uh, the Wayne Scott CAC Committee met on, uh, Saturday and Carolyn Logan Gluck, um, opened our meeting with, um, a tribute to nine 11 and, uh, moments of silence. And I have to say that, um, uh, it was very moving and I think there were many of us that were in tears, including Carolyn. And and part of it is because it's still such a raw emotion for all of us. Um, and, uh, you know, just I want to thank her for getting us to remember, even though we were still meeting on on that Saturday morning, it still started out with remembering what happened, um, 20 years ago. So, um, the biggest, uh, conversation was about the airport discussion. And I'm going to just read you some comments that were made. These were, um, you know, some of most of them, there were multiple comments in the same kind of vein. So I just wanted to give you a flavor of kind of what some of the things that were said. Uh, there were people that said certain stakeholders have more weight than others. For example, calls from proponents for the airport dilute the impact of those affected by the airport. It was noted that a Washington DC lobbyist attended the first two meetings and they suggested that perhaps if you attend multiple meetings, you can only speak at one of them. You can listen but not speak or be part of the discussion at the second, third or fourth. Um, they also said comments don't necessarily register. As we're going to read them, the comments from the consultants don't register the passion that some people feel about this airport. Um, the airport diversion, they're all trying to feel that they're balancing the effects of the two airports and it's a difficult solution and nobody has come to any conclusion yet. Um, and I thought that was taking our role. So we haven't either. Um, they were, uh, thinking about East Hampton town as a whole. They want the the town board to think of East Hampton town and the community as a whole. We should look at the net decrease of flights over the town if East Hampton Airport closed or was modified. For example, they were saying Montauk could see an increase, but the entire town would experience a net decrease. And we may want to ask the consultants, uh, HMMH to consider that in in some way. Um, they were comments about the 99% were that are affected by the airport for the 1% or less who actually travel by air. Um, town should consider a meeting in person who where statements are made. Um, this format is a different purpose than the small group dynamics that we see, um, right now, whether we're in person or whether we would, um, you know, at doing it virtually, it's still a small group dynamics. And so they think that perhaps, um, a meeting of just statements made would be helpful. Um, if the airport closed or modified, what will go on the land? There are a lot of questions that they still have, um, that they would like answered. Where is the actual re-envisioning going to happen? Um, this needs to happen as another step in the process. Comments about, these were quotes, um, who we're dealing with with reference to the Blade president who called into a town board work session. Quote, they said, and how now they want to compromise, end quote. Um, they felt that there was a threat, um, about increasing helicopters to Montauk if East Hampton closed and that this was not the way to deal, um, with a compromise situation. And that if this is indeed their tactic, there is no compromise with Blade. Um, in quotes, again, facts were stated in the breakout groups from some and no one could dispute them. So they would like to have a forum of questions and answers that would include experts. So if somebody said, uh, you know, how long a runway was, there was nobody there to say, no, it's not that long. I mean, it it there were some of these things were very basic. Even though there's a lot of information on our website, there's still not everybody is up to um, reading all of that information. So they would like a forum that perhaps would discuss and they could have a back and forth question answer with experts. Um, and so and that, okay, that was it for the airport discussion. Um, and I'm going to write this all up and send it to our consultants as well so that they have a flavor of what was being said at the Wayne Scott CAC. Uh, we also had a briefing on the Wayne Scott Commercial Center. Uh, they have filed their EIS, um, and it's on the town's website. The planning board will deal, uh, with its completeness and decide if it's now complete. They are moving forward with the secret process. They're looking for impacts on land, water and traffic. Uh, the Wayne Scott Tree Committee also met last week, um, and on November 8th, the first memorial tree will be planted on private property. They will be coppered beach trees and they now have an email set up, which is waynescotttrees@gmail.com. And we are continuing to meet once a month and, um, moving towards the 501(c)(3), I think is where the group would like to to end up and using the Sewing Society at this moment um, for their fundraising. On Town Line Road was a discussion about the East Hampton side. Town, there's town residents only can park on Town Line Road to go to the beach. Um, it appears that Sagaponic wants the same on the other side of the road. And this presents, uh, to the residents there, uh, this would make a very dangerous situation. They, um, thought that the supervisor has had discussions with the mayor of Sagaponic and they would like to know if there was any outcome. And if you could inform the group what's going on, they would be, um, they would like to know what's happening, um, uh, on that road. And if there are any further meetings planned, um, if so, how could they be involved or how could they get their comments to either? Um, they're going to attend the meeting at Sagaponic, but they'd also like to to, you know, have a dialogue with the supervisor as well.
With regard to that specifically, um, you know, I do think that the, uh, Village of Sagaponic is interested in taking advantage of the right of way that they own on their side of Town Line Road to improve parking. The mayor had expressed to me that he has, uh, he has been receiving a lot of comments from his constituents about the need for parking and that they own that, uh, shoulder west of the center line and that they intend to improve it, uh, so that their residents have a place to park. The, uh, shoulder, I believe, on that side of the road is actually wider than it is on the East Hampton side.
So there was one, um, woman who said that she, um, and this is how rumors got started. Um, that East Hampton was going to give Sagaponic residents East Hampton stickers. And I said that.
No, in fact, in fact, we did just the opposite last year because we had received a lot of concern from Wayne Scott. I had received a lot of concerns from Wayne Scott residents about the fact that, uh, some Southampton surf camps and whatnot were parking up the East Hampton side. And when we looked at, uh, you know, who owned the property and what the parking regulations were, it's although the signs said parking by permit only, uh, didn't say parking for East Hampton permit. And, um, so we rectified that situation, which I think probably further encouraged Sagaponic to do something about their side of the road.
Yeah, that there were. There were a lot of compliments about, you know, the town responding quickly and right away. And they they, I think the term that that, uh, one of the, um, people on the road were, you probably got the hackles up of Sagaponic, um, by putting those signs up that say resident only, which is appropriate. Um, so, but I said there there'd be no way, at least I was at least one vote that would say, no, you're not going to give.
Absolutely not. I mean, you know, we don't.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
Al Hampton hasn't been sharing their parking locations with East Hampton residents and, you know, I I know that some people have said, well, you know, if you're close to the jurisdiction, but I don't see them giving, you know, Long Beach parking to East Hampton residents. So.
Yeah. So if there's any other, um, uh, meetings that you have, uh, Peter, or with Mayor Lockheim is involved, I'd love to be invited to that.
Yeah, absolutely. But I would, I would suggest, I would suggest that if you want to know what Sagaponic is considering, that you pay attention to what their meetings are and what they say. I I haven't really had any involvement.
Okay.
Uh, other than a brief conversation with with the mayor who was checking in to see if, you know, we might be, he's, he said, I was considering asking if, uh, our residents could park on your side of the road, but I've I've decided not to ask. And I said, well, then I I've decided not to say no at this moment, at this moment, because I just, I, you know, it's very limited parking for our own residents. And, uh, you know, they have, they have options. In fact, they have some very good options, which I think they're planning on exercising on their side of the road.
Okay. Um, so we also had the Chair of the Amigants at CAC speak about a recent letter that she sent to, uh, the town board about, uh, house sizes. And we discussed that briefly and Carolyn Logan Gluck also expressed, um, concerns in Wayne Scott about the same type of issue, but also added that the town should consider tightening, uh, clearing restrictions. That they're seeing some of the smaller lots being completely cleared of of trees, even though they could be, you know, in in their view, uh, saved and should be saved. I think it kind of runs against the tree committee trying to get trees and then seeing the clearing that that could be going on as well. Um, just bring you up to date on the little farmhouse and, uh, big thank you to Severo and to Dicky Webb for picking up the crate for the little farmhouse that was being stored for a amount of time over at Michael Davis Construction. Um, it is now going to be stored on Town Hall Campus and so it's it's in the back right now. If you want to go see the big crate, it's not quite into, uh, its final resting place for until we can finally find a site for it to be reconstructed. But, um, I want to thank a lot of folks in 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 say, and, um, sorry, in Wayne Scott that really helped make that happen. And for, um, that, you know, the town to help out and and Severo to make this a special trip on Saturday to get it done. So I I think done a lot. Um, Arts Council also met. We had taken a summer break and hadn't met for July and August, but doesn't mean that anybody had been not working. So, uh, Janet Jennings is going to step down as the Chair of the Committee. And we voted, um, uh, Rich Motus to be the Chair and our co-chair with Scott Bludorn. And Janet is going to be working, um, still staying on the committee, but also working on, uh, Brooks Park. And she was very excited about all the things that are moving forward with Brooks Park. And, uh, uh, they're moving into and and she's going to be working with other committee members. I really have to thank the Arts Committee for everything, uh, Arts Council for everything that they've done. You've got Janet Jennings, you've got Jane Martin, who is also stepping down, but she's going to be full time now working on Brooks Park. Uh, uh, Carol Steinberg and, um, Barbara Thomas, all members of the committee, but now going to be working also in helping with Brooks Park. Uh, Janet is working with Carol Steinberg, our lawyer that's on the committee um, to get incorporation completed. And after incorporation, then there will be a 501(c)(3) application that they're working on simultaneously. And, um, they wanted to thank Peter for, in the meantime, they can still be raising, um, money. And Peter is, uh, going to present us with a resolution that I hope we will all vote yes on. And that's to have a fund here at East Hampton until their 501(c)(3) is, um, approved. So it's moving forward and everyone is ecstatic. The name of the entity is going to be, it's in my notes here. Um, hold on, for somehow now that I've lost my place, it's the Brooks Park Arts and Nature Center. And there are a whole bunch of reasons why the word nature is also in it, but it's it's time. It's, I know we've had a long meeting today. So, but lots of good things are happening at Brooks Park. I want to thank the, um, uh, Peter and hit the committee that he's working with on um, management and and getting this to to actually happen. And so it looks like it really will. Um, last thing is they did Art Apart at the end of June. I just wanted to tell you that 35 artists participated in Art Apart and that was a a great event. It's our second year of doing the Art Apart. And, uh, we'll see if we can, uh, have to do it again next year, but hopefully we will and it won't be because of COVID, but it will because it's over and we can still do things outside. So that is my report.
Thank you, Sylvia. Jeff, do you have a liaison report?
Yeah, I do. I, um, attended the 911 memorial at, uh, the Hook Mill and, uh, it was a pretty impressive crowd, a lot of friends. It looked looked like at least 300 firefighters or more with police. And the large flags with the hook and ladder trucks, it was a pretty somber experience. It's hard really to avoid that feeling of doom as you're standing there. Um, but, uh, as I posted some photos on Facebook, I, uh, wished us all that the, uh, the pain and anguish uh, of that day and what happened would not divert us from the values that we hold so dear that, uh, make us a better, a better country. And I think that's the the positive message to take out of it. Um, I saw one of my favorite guys in uniform for the first time, Mr. Vinnie, the barber, who reminded me that my son was sitting on his barber's chair. who reminded me that my son was sitting on his barber's chair for his many haircuts and fix-up haircuts. And it reminded me that when 911 happened, I turned off a lot of the media. And then finally took him shopping with me and he saw a, one of the magazines that showed pictures of people jumping out of the building. And I remember him saying to me, that's not real, is it? And I was a little bit at a loss as to what to say. And I'm also remembering a conversation I had with Russell Stein way back when, when it happened or nearly when it happened. And which I'm reminded of really every day when I drive up to Sag Harbor, that a friend and an East Hampton resident, Linda Gronland was on Flight 93, the, the plane that went down in the fields of Pennsylvania. And Russell told, Russell was a friend of hers. She was an up and coming engineer at BMW. And she was also a brown belt in karate. And, and when we were talking about Linda, Russell said, I'm sure that when they organized the passengers to fight, that Linda would have been one of the ones fighting. So it was a difficult day, very hard to, to stand still and hear two bagpipers pipe amazing grace. It really focuses you. I also attended a happier event at Hampton's, Hampton's Pride event at the Wayne Scott Green. I'm happy to report the Wayne Scott Green is looking great. All the grass has come up and the areas that were drainage problems look like they're taken care of. They seem to be taken care of by a nice thick growth of grass. And the, the paving is in on the walkways and the benches are there. And it was really a very lovely event. It was reasonably quiet, happy. There was some, the music was kicking up when I, when I left, I had to leave early. But it, it was a great group of people. I think they're really happy that they've been able to cooperate with the town and the Wayne Scott CAC to have the event, to come up with some funds to commemorate the Swamp nightclub, which was more than just a nightclub. It was a, a respite from the world and also a great support during the dark days of the AIDS epidemic. And there were some people there that actually dated back to the Gay Men's Health Crisis Group. Thinking of Louis Bradbury, who was a, an organizer, a fantastic organizer that really, you know, broke down the doors of politics and all the need to get funding for, for AIDS research. So it was fun, but with a serious note as well. Also on Saturday, I had a good time reading, being part of the marathon reading of Moby Dick, which I really have always liked. It's, most people I think don't realize or that it's a recounting that really touches us very closely. The ship returned to Sag Harbor in the end. And I remember a passage that was being read aloud before me in which the author predicted that the whales could, could never be, become extinct because they were too hard to catch and travel, you know, the oceans wide. And it would just be impossible to ever kill off all these leviathans. And it's a beautifully written passage and beautifully reasoned passage. And of course, completely wrong. And what struck me about Moby Dick, aside from the fact that it's a really, really wonderfully written book, is that it describes sort of a transition from one energy age to a new energy age. And so in a way, it's very relevant to us today because probably within 50 years of that book being written, whaling was completely extinct. Sag Harbor had gone from a harbor the size of New York to a small village, a depressed village. And of course, it rebounded with the discovery of oil in America. And it struck me that we're probably on the edge of a similar kind of transition into a new world of energy, which hopefully for us will be a better world with a lot of jobs and cleaner fuel. And we can save the planet, which is in real serious trouble right now. So it was a great experience. I really, really enjoyed it. I also wanted to bring up the fact that I got a, a letter from our former congressional candidate, Perry Gershon. I'm not going to read it, but I can summarize it and just say that he was disappointed by the service that he was unable to get at our, our town COVID testing site. And after visiting, couldn't, couldn't get any appointments after Labor Day. This was apparently a, a family member's friend came down with COVID after Labor Day visits. So everybody, four people in the family needed to test. They couldn't get appointments. One person eventually got appointment, but they had to go to Southampton, Southampton to get testing. And the person that finally did get tested at East Hampton couldn't get results as long as like a week after the PCR test. So he asked, he asked me to comment on his letter to the Town Board and to mention him by name. And he was disappointed that the service, he felt was worse than it was in February and March. And asked us to do everything that we can to improve service over there. So I wanted to leave that with the Town Board. I, there had been a lot of comments on that.
Did you reach out to Metabol ever, Jeff, on this?
I'm sorry?
Have you reached out to the licensee about this?
No, David, you're actually, you've been the contact there. You, you chose them and you, I think, know them best.
Just asking you.
I, I'm reporting it, I'm reporting it because a constituent wrote me a letter yesterday and I wanted to let you know.
You wrote a letter or an email?
Excuse me, excuse me, an email, wrote, wrote an email.
Oh, I wish you'd forwarded to all of us so we could see. Because then, you know, we could have made a contact over there.
Peter had a copy of the letter, I was told.
Actually, I didn't get, I didn't get a letter. I did get a text message.
I'm sorry, I'm using them interchangeably.
Okay, well.
So I, I would just.
I did get a text message and I'll report on, in my liaison report, the status of testing.
All right, well, I, I think it's important to pass it along. Perry is somebody we know, he's a responsible guy. And I've, we've talked about this before. And, you know, David, I know that you've worked with the company and you probably are the best contact for them. So I, I leave it to you.
We appreciate you sharing that with us, Jeff. I, I know that we have received other comments from other people as well. Testing as it was at the beginning of the pandemic is problematic due to the number of people who suddenly want to be tested and the upswing and resurgence of the positivity numbers. So, you know, that's, that's something we're working to address. I'll just also state that, you know, this has been something that the town has taken on, myself and David Lees has taken on to make sure that testing is available. There is no hospital within the town. There is no other provider offering to the public. There is no county health department testing of our population. There's no state testing of our population. There's no federal testing of our population. And this is something we've taken on. And it's honestly, it's something I don't feel that town should have to take on, but it's something we've willingly taken on to ensure the best possible, you know, circumstances for our residents and visitors. And ensure that there is testing because frankly, without this, we'd have none. And I'll report further, you know, I, I don't want to take up any more time with your liaison report.
Well, I just want to add that this was, this is post-Labor Day. I know that there was quite a crush during Labor Day and before, but this, this happened post, post-Labor.
Well, there's, there's still a crush. Just look out the window. Oh, wait, you're not here.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Peter, you're, you're really a kid, you're really a kidder there. I got a good laugh out of you.
Can I ask a question? So I, I've been attending the community engagement meetings for the airport over the, the last three meetings. And someone in my group last night mentioned that they had sent an email to re-envision HTO, the webs, the, you know, the email address that was set up. And it was my understanding that if someone sent an email to that address, it went to all five Town Board members plus the consultants. And he sent an email yesterday morning and I never received it. So.
I'll check, I'll check back with IT. That, that was the, that was the, the way it was supposed to function.
I've also forwarded many emails to re-envision HTO. And have any of the Town Boards received them?
No.
No, I'm not receiving any.
I, I, I send, I forward almost every one that I get that, that I talk with or get emails from. And then there's been at least two, two to three dozen that I've sent to that email address that, if we can look into that, that'd be great.
All right, yeah, I will. I talked to, I did talk to, I believe I was speaking to Heath about that. And I'll get back to him. That is the way it's supposed to function, that it would go to the clerk and the Town Boards. And I believe Cooley as well.
And the consultants and Lisa and Peter.
That's correct, and that's correct, and Lisa and, and Peter. And also we were talking about making it searchable by the public. It's supposed to be searchable. But that, that, that took a little bit more technical know-how. But I will, I'll follow up on that.
Can I also mention that when you get emails individually, if I don't get them, they do not become part of the public record?
Yeah, I'm aware of that. And when I've gotten them, I've, I've tried to forward them to you, Carol. But this, if they come to this HTO, re-envision HTO, they would come to you automatically. So I'll.
I have not gotten anything from that web, from that site.
Okay.
All right, Jeff, that sounds like something that's important to follow up on.
Yep, will do.
Anything else?
Can I bring up something that I should have, I should have done during my liaison report? And that was just David Buddha, John had asked a question about the Cabas property and about had it gone to the planning board for subdivision? Can you just address how that purchase is going to work?
Yeah, we are buying a portion of the property, as, as he noted. And in talking to, or, and as you also may know, and I don't know if he does know, that the town will have a right to purchase the remaining portion of the property if and when Mr. Cabas decides to sell the balance of it. Based on that, and in discussing this with our condemnation council, it was, and also our title company, because it's important, we have, you know, clear and insured title on it. They basically indicated that they don't have a requirement that we pursue a subdivision, that our acquisition of a part of the parcel for municipal purposes is basically a, almost, almost the equivalent of a taking. In that it, it divides off the parcel that we acquired from the balance of the property. And since we are looking to acquire the rest of it if and when he sells, and he has indicated that he does plan to do that within the next few years, it didn't seem to make a lot of sense to pursue a subdivision. If in fact, at some point he decides not to sell in the future, or for some reason doesn't sell to us, I think that's an issue that they will need to pursue to address the remaining portion of the property. But basically, once we take the property as a municipality, we've basically done the equivalent of a subdivision along the lines of the purchase. Both condemnation council and the title company have indicated they have no legal basis to require us to do a subdivision. So that's why we're proceeding that way. It, it did seem sort of a wasted effort to try to do that when ultimately we'll, we'll acquire the full site. Because we will have a recorded right to purchase as a part of this acquisition.
Thanks, John.
Sure.
Anything else, Jeff?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. The Amagansett Citizens Advisory Committee met last night. And there was a discussion about the parking lot north of Main Street, the public lot there. Residents and members of the Committee were interested in seeing some additional lighting installed. They liked the way the solar lighting in the new portion of the parking lot is working. They've asked that we look into possibly adding some additional solar lights in the larger parking lot to help with lighting. There's really not much lighting in that parking lot, aside from what you get from the, the buildings located at the southern end and the Comfort Station. I told them we would look into doing that. They're also interested in having some security cameras also placed somewhere in the lot for security and safety reasons. There was a, a brief mention of the RPZ valve, which is on the, on Bluff Road near Indian Wells. It's a rather large, unattractive utility box that's there. I believe it was changed out to a larger box when the new water line going down to the Comfort Station at Public Beach was installed. David, you may know more about that. But there's a request that it be screened with some sort of indigenous screening material that, that deer won't eat. There was a great deal of discussion about the letter that was read by the Chair, Rona Klopman, during our last work session. The prior ACAC meeting that occurred at the Life Saving Station, the, the interest in informing the Town Board that they're, that we look at and address potentially house size and coverage and whatnot, other zoning restrictions in response to what they see as more redevelopment within the Lanes and Beach Hampton area of Amagansett. A discussion was had about requesting a moratorium on building permits and capping house size. There was pretty robust discussion about that at that earlier meeting. It was decided that rather than try to put together a letter or a resolution at that time that one be drafted, circulated to the members and then discussed at a future board, at a future ACAC meeting, and then submitted to the board. And it didn't exactly happen that way. And there was some discussion also about the process there. They're going to revisit that letter. I encourage them to please give us a much more precise request in terms of what they think is important to address within zoning. I, I explained to them the criteria for having a moratorium while one looks at updating the comprehensive plan or instituting zoning laws for land use. And so there, I mean, there has to be a nexus, there has to be a public purpose. There's a whole list of criteria there. So they're, they're going to have further discussion about that and maybe sending an additional letter at some point in the near future to the Town Board. There was also a request that the Highway Department, as the season lets up a little bit, that the road shoulders and street parking area of downtown Business District in Amagansett could use a sweep. So I'll forward that request to Steve Lynch. We had a meeting of the Town Property Management Committee yesterday. And there was a lot of discussion about Brooks Park. We had Janet Jennings and Marietta Grvaris, who attended. They brought us up to date as to their efforts, particularly Janet Jennings's efforts to create a 501(c)(3). Sylvia covered that to some degree. They're getting some legal advice from another Arts Council member who's an attorney. They're moving forward with that. And I will, I will have a resolution, as Sylvia mentioned, to create a dedicated fund to be able to take charitable donations for the Brooks Park property to help, as we did with the creation of the Duck Creek entity before they got their 501(c)(3) status. We did, I did the same. I created a dedicated fund that the Board approved. And we were able to collect donations on behalf of efforts there. I'm really encouraged by the momentum that this group of individuals has gained. And so, as Sylvia said, very promising. And we look forward to working with them going forward. There was discussion about Fort Pond House and the request for an ADA mat to be placed there to aid with access to a portion of the property to the south of the house, where the picnic area is. That ADA mat can easily be installed. And, and so you'll see a. easily be installed. And, and so you'll see a resolution for that coming forward soon. Also want to mention that CCOM has reserved the use of the property at Fort Pond House, Carroll Morrison Park, for the Saturday, the 18th of September, from 1:00 to 3:00 for picnic. The public's welcome and invited. There will be, again, some food and drink and an opportunity to see and hear about the effort CCOM and the town have taken to improve the water quality within Montauk, particularly around Fort Pond, Lake Montauk, et cetera. Again, the public's welcome. We had a discussion about the Boys and Girls Harbor Management Plan, and as we discussed this at our last work session, and the board was supportive, have a resolution on for September 23rd to schedule a public hearing for October 7. And after that's adopted, approved and adopted, then the committee will bring forward plans for pavilion bathrooms and other improvements at the park for discussion by the town board. We had some discussion about the Springs Library. The roof needs to be repaired, as well as the chimney. We originally had approved and were moving forward on the roof bid when it became apparent that the chimney would first have to be repaired. There was rebid, and I don't believe we had any bidders asking that to go out to bid again, now that we're post-summer season, and hopefully we'll have more respondents. There's also a proposal and work being done to reconfigure the bathrooms in that facility to meet the ADA guidelines, be more accessible, as well as repair. We'll actually reconfigure the ADA ramp, the rear of the structure and the access to the building. We'll be following what up with Drew Bennett, who's working on that proposal. We really like to get that work underway and completed prior to next summer. So we'll be pushing on that. The budget schedule, we've been working on the budget. I've been working on that with Rebecca Hansen, our Budget Officer and Finance Staff. I'll submit the tentative budget to the town board members and the public for review in preparation for our work sessions on October 5 and 12. That tentative budget will be submitted by the 30th of September, as required by law. We'll have a notice of public hearing in the star on 21st, with the public hearing on November 4, and adoption of the budget by November 18, again, ahead of the November 20 requirement by law. Kathy mentioned the wireless poll. The Wireless Committee will be meeting. We had a meeting with our consultants, Kathy and I, the other day, and I'm pleased to see that we had a really broad and robust response. In fact, the consultants say this is the largest response they've ever had from a community, and they've had a number of different sized communities, some which are larger than ours, to which I said that, you know, our populace is quite engaged in the goings on in town. And this poll will, I think, reflect the, the interest of people. And so we'll have that scheduled for a work session. I believe that's going to be presented on the 21st. Sorry, Kathy?
Yep.
We, we got word that we were successful and prevailed with the United States Court of Appeals case in the Lake Montauk jetty lawsuit, known as Congemi. That was a lawsuit where 11 properties owners west of the jetty were suing the town, claiming that town was responsible for erosion caused by the jetties Lake Montauk Harbor. The decision was rendered on September 7, which ended 10 years of highly contested litigation. And the court found that the town lacked the requisite control and intent necessary to be held responsible for the erosion, and that because the jetties were necessary and served the greater public good, that, and that the plaintiffs had bought their homes long after the jetties were built, that the town attempted work with the plaintiffs to address erosion issues that they found that the town was not responsible. So, very pleased that that's taken place, that ends the litigation with a resounding victory for the town, and I think has important implications throughout the town with future erosion issues. I want to give the board an update on COVID cases. Ending, these, these figures are from the county. Thirty-six new cases as of September 5, another 53 new cases as of the 12th. This, this 89 cases in, in less than a two-week period. That's only slightly less than the numbers we saw back last March. Ninety-six for that entire month. So clearly, there's a much higher rate of positivity. The parish memorial hall was doing testing for Southampton Hospital. On the 9th, 10th, 11th, and 13th, they had 252 people getting tested, 22 positive, nearly 9% positive rate. They currently have four COVID patients admitted in the hospital. That number was zero for a good part of the summer. Our, the testing company that's here on Town Properties reported 12 to 13% last reporting period of positive cases. And county-wide, the positivity rate was 4.5% as of the 12th. You know, we continue to monitor that infection rate, which is still high. We hope that that will go down soon, but it certainly sparked a lot more interest in getting tested. Jeff alluded to the fact that people are finding it difficult to get a test locally, not just in East Hampton, but even going outside to the hospital or whatever. Everybody's basically requiring appointments at this time due to the capacity issues. I've been seeking to expand capacity and seeking additional parties that could provide testing within the town and shorten result times. So, again, expand capacity and shorten result times is very important. I'll be meeting with a prospective company tomorrow, and we'll report to you all on, on that meeting afterwards. So I think it's, it's something that was unavailable. Testing was unavailable here in East Hampton early on in the pandemic. We worked to facilitate testing with the Healthcare Foundation and Northwell Health next door, eventually getting a company to come here on our own property and expanded to Montauk. I don't think the demand for testing is going to go down until the positivity rate goes down. And we've seen this before, as that spikes, that there is real interest in a capacity issue that we're going to try and address. Again, the fact that a small town like East Hampton has to take on this responsibility is, is something, you know, I'm supportive of and willing to do, but only because there's no county testing, there's no state testing, there's no federal government resources being brought to bear. And it's critically important that we try to get testing for our residents and visitors in a timely way. So committed to doing that. We've done that and we'll continue to work on.
Peter, I, I have a question in your discussions. Have you, have you heard any indication that the bottleneck with this company is that they only have used one lab and it's, they just don't have the lab capacity? Have you, has that been mentioned to you?
So, you know, capacity is an issue. This is a company that's not just located here. And again, I don't, I'm not aware of any other municipality taking this on. You know, I think we're in a situation because we don't yet have a hospital emergency room next door. That's something that the hospital could set up and have provided for our community, but lacking that, you know, it's, it's fallen upon us to try to provide that. And, you know, we've worked hard to, to continue to do that. Again, as I said, we initially started with the Healthcare Foundation, working with them and Northwell Health. We were able to get some testing here earlier. That was immediately followed by this company, Metabol, who, depending on the number of people seeking a test, has been able to perform well. But, you know, once, once capacity is reached, then it's, it's problematic. Obviously, there are more people that want to get tested. I've had people call my office and asking where they can get tested. They need, they want to test in the next couple of days, and as soon as they could get an appointment, it was two days out. It's, it's really a capacity issue, Jeff.
What I'm asking specifically is.
In the hospital, by the way, is also requiring appointments. And when the person, when I suggested they contact the hospital, they said same, same situation, two days out.
But what I'm asking specifically is, have you gotten any information from them that it's their, it's the fact that they are only working with one lab and they don't have the lab capacity? Not, not the, you know, people managing the appointments, but lab capacity? Have you?
Well, I mean, you can, you can define capacity any way you want. It's the ability to administer and get results for tests in a timely way.
But I'm, I'm asking you if they've mentioned that, that the reason that they're not able to get tests timely is, is with the lab that they're using?
It's after the tests are taken. They don't have an issue with personnel to, to give the tests, Jeff. It's, it's the volume and the turnaround. They, they went from taking walk-ups to not taking walk-ups because, because of the surge and volume increase and people wanting to get tested. So they had to cut that back, cut that out because they couldn't handle that. By the way, the hospital doesn't have walk-ups either, from what I understand.
I know that Dr. Dempsey, a local physician nearby, has, has got very good turnaround and is managing to get better turnarounds. I'm just wondering what the.
Well, my understanding was that he was taking people from the general public and stopped doing that. So if, you know, if you're a patient of his, again, it's capacity. You know, it's good turnaround if you, you know, if you have a limited patient universe. We're talking about anyone in the township who wants to get tested. And unless their provider offers testing, you know, they're coming to us.
Maybe we should talk to Dr. Dempsey to see if he's got extra capacity.
Well, as I said, he curtailed that because it was overwhelming his practice, but I'm happy to reach out to him. Again, I'm, I'm meeting with the company tomorrow that has a local Long Island lab. Hopefully, you know, they will be able to provide additional services or services at the level that, you know, we think our, our citizens really need.
Can you share the name of that company?
But another thing on this, Jeff, is also, part of this is, is there's, this is not a department for the town to be doing. So if you or any other person wants to bring any, any other company in to help us with this, or go out and outreach to Dr. Dempsey or others, please, that's just the job we have to provide, the safety for the residents for testing. So it should be up to Peter, myself, it's everyone do it. So please, if you want to outreach, bring it to us. We'll, we'll keep working on it.
I, I outreach to Dr. Dempsey a long time ago, and the board rejected that.
No, we didn't reject it. It was more the merrier.
Don't, don't, don't.
More the merrier. Always been more the merrier.
Do you want to tell us the name? Can you share the name of the company that you're talking to?
Can, Jeff.
Care One.
I'm sorry?
Care One. C-A-R-E.
Care One. Thank you.
And, you know, you're, you're welcome to assist in the effort if you, if you want to try to find a testing firm that can provide tests for our citizens. We welcome that if you can do that. That's all I have for a liaison report. I believe we have some resolutions. Kathy?
We do. So starting with Resolution 2021-1020, and that is a special warrant for the Cabas closing, which is the property we're purchasing for the new senior center. And that's in the amount of $1,638,118.32.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry.
1021 is approval of various special event permits. The East Hampton Lions Club Annual Chicken Barbecue Fundraiser at the American Legion is Saturday, September 18, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Itry's Fourth Annual Ride and Wine, Various Town Roads, Saturday, September 25, from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The East Hampton Town Trustees' Largest Clam Contest in front of the Town Trustee Building on Sunday, October 3, from 12:00 to 3:00. And Event Power Mighty Man Triathlon on Lions Field and Various Roads. That's Saturday and Sunday, October 2nd and 3rd. On Saturday, it's 9:00 to 5:00. And on Sunday, they start setting up from, at 4:00 a.m., and it goes till 3:00 p.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry.
Resolution 1022 is to authorize a special prosecutor for field appearance ticket number 2679, and that is subject to judicial approval at an hourly rate of $150 to handle and resolve the prosecution of this case.
Second, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Leece?
Aye.
Councilwoman Overby?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bragman?
Accused.
Supervisor Vance Goyet?
I'm also going to recuse myself as I live next door to this individual.
I'd like to offer Resolution 2021-1023, to appoint part-time recreational aide Benjamin Frisha, Frisha, excuse me, I apologize, at the rate of $15 per hour, retroactive to September 13, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry.
1024 is to appoint additional members to the Nation Preserve Committee, Erwin Levy, for the rest of the calendar year 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry. Welcome, Erwin.
1025 is authorized payment to PSCNG for a credit memo for $37.79.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry.
1026 is a budget modification for part-time salaries in the amount of $18,500 from, part-time salaries, excuse me, to repairs general in the same amount.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Pass and carry.
1027 is a notice of bidders for EH21-035 for the Akabonic Solar Farm Pollinator Meadow Rebid Bid. Available September 16, 2021. The bid is due back on September 30, 2021. Please contact our purchasing agent at 631-324-4141 at office hours if you have any questions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry.
1028 is notice of bidders for EH21-036. This is for the Westlake Comfort Station. Bid available September 16, 2021. Bid due back October 14, 2021. Any questions, please contact our purchasing agent at 631-324-4183. And I believe there is going to be a site visit for all bidders on September 30, 2021, 11 a.m. Located at, sorry, located at 478 Westlake Drive, Montauk.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry.
1029 is a second memorial bench donation from Charles Maurici, and, and the loving memory of his wife Betty, to place at Rhodes Valley in Montauk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Charles.
Resolution 2021-1030 is car-free day, Long Island, 2021. This is going to happen on September 22. Last year's pledges placed East Hampton in the top five participating municipalities as a car-free day, Long Island. We hope we can get in the top two. The town of East Hampton has added four fully electric zero emission vehicles to our municipal fleet. And we'd like to designate September 22 as car-free day, Long Island. It can also be car-light. So you don't have to give up your car, just try to coordinate with others and getting errands or put all your errands together at one time. And resolve that the town employees are asked to be mindful of use of the vehicles on car-free day.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry.
Resolution, and and just go to the website. I mean, just go to the internet and put in Car-Free Day, Long Island. And you'll take the pledge. 2021-1031 is to reimburse overpayment of health and dental and vision insurance. And this was in the amount of $99.22.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry.
Resolution 2021-1032 is payout resignation for Michael DeLalio.
Can we just go back? It's actually a total of $118.53.
Okay, that, sorry, we, I'll just read it over again. It'll be a reimbursement of $99.22 for medical coverage and $19.31 for dental and vision for a total of $118.53.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Sylvia.
Yeah, no, thank you, Peter, for picking up on that. Payout resignation to Michael DeLalio. And I'm sorry, he's leaving. He's moving out of state. And resolve that the finance office be authorized to issue a check through payroll for the appropriate payroll account for 58 hours, almost in a half of vacation hours, 36.35, 34 compensatory hours at $25.34 per hour for a gross total of $2,397.38.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wishing you the best luck, Michael. Pass and carry.
Yeah. 2021-1033 is pay out upon resignation of Stephen Shoal. The finance office is authorized to issue a check from payroll for the appropriate amount for .17 compensatory hours at $28.50 and a prorated longevity amount of $1,144.23, less .72 vacation hours for a gross total of $1,128.70.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry.
And 2021-1034 is to increase water expenses, the expense line for the manor houses. And we're going to increase it by $3,000.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Pass and carry. Resolution 1035 is to ratify the memorandum of agreement with the town and the SOA, Superior Officers Association. Town Board hereby ratifies memorandum of agreement between the town and the SOA covering the period of January 1, 21 through December 31st, 2024, dated August 17th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry. Resolution 1036 is to approve change order number one for Montauk Tower, EH20 025. And that is resolved that change order one, the amount of $21,084.41 hereby approved. And this is because certain changes and specifications required to reroute certain cabling and electrical wiring at the Montauk Tower.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry. Any other resolutions to bring to the board?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move to enter into an executive session to discuss the acquisition of real property and to discuss personnel in the town attorney's office and to receive advice from council. Second.
I believe we also have an anonymous donation and CPF.
Yes, I have
Gray lady. So do we have a second with those?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass and carry. Is it okay if we go into exec session at 3:45?
Perfect.
Yep.
Give everyone a chance to get a quick bite of lunch?
Thank you.
3:15. Are you kidding?
Well, dinner. Linner, whatever you want to call it.
Don't call me late, Peter.
Okay, thank you. Stay safe and be well, everyone. Remember COVID's still here. Take precautions. And
Wear your mask when you're out.
When you're in public, yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.